Okay, we'll get proceedings underway. And can I commence by welcoming everyone, those at the table and those joining us for public, to what is the sixth, excuse me, hearing of portfolio committee number two into health, outcomes and access to health and hospital services in rural, regional and remote New South Wales. My name's Greg Donnelly and I'm the Chair of the Committee. The inquiry is examining health outcomes and access to services, patient experience, planning and capital expenditure in rural, regional and remote New South Wales. Before I commence, I'd like to acknowledge the people of the Gamilaro people, who are the traditional custodians of this land, and also I'd like to pay respects to the elders past, present and emerging of the nation and extend our respect to them and any who may be joining us on the internet today. Today, we will be hearing from a number of stakeholders, including local community groups, local government, private citizens and medical professionals. I thank everyone for the time that they're going to make available today to give evidence to this important inquiry. Before I commence, I'd like to make some brief comments about the procedures for today's hearing. Today's hearing is being broadcast live via the Parliament's website and the transcript of today's hearing will be placed on the committee's website when it becomes available, which will be in a few days' time. In accordance with the broadcasting guidelines, media representatives, and welcome to the media who are joining us this morning, are reminded that they must take responsibility for what they published about the committee's proceedings. While parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses giving evidence today, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of their evidence at the hearing. I therefore urge witnesses to be careful about comments you may make to the media or to others after you complete your evidence before the inquiry. Committee hearings are not intended to provide a forum for people to make adverse reflections about others under the protection of parliamentary privilege. In that regard, it's important that witnesses focus on the issues raised by the inquiry's terms of reference and avoid naming individuals unnecessarily. All witnesses have a right to procedural fairness according to the procedural fairness resolution of the Legislative Council of 2018. If witnesses are unable to answer a question today and want more time to respond, they can take the question on notice. Written answers to questions taken on notice are required to be returned within 21 days. And if witnesses wish to hand up documents to the committee, they should do so via one of the committee staff who, I think most of you will recognise, are joining us today. In terms of the audiability of the hearing today, I remind both committee members and witnesses to speak into the microphones. Just to confirm, there's two microphones before you. There's the ones that obviously afford the room itself and then there's the ones called handset. So I think everyone should have one near them or close to them. If not, you can officially move them closer as need be, but which is which, nobody knows. No, well, you're going to be caught one way or the other in terms of what you say, so you might as well say it nice and loud. Finally, could everyone please turn their mobile phones to silent for the duration of the hearing? So welcome our first panel of witnesses. You're most welcome. And what we'll do is moving from my left across to my right, sketch a witness to state first their name, their position title in terms of the organisation you're representing today, or if you're by yourself, in your own right, and swear either an oath or an affirmation, whichever you prefer, the words of both should be before you. So we'll commence with Professor McGrath. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Kate McGrath. I'm a member of the Gannadah Community Roundtable. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. I'm Rebecca Dryden. I'm the Chair of the Gannadah Early Childhood Network. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, Mrs Dryden. Mr Ryan.
I'm Rebecca Ryan. I'm a representative of the Gannadah Early Childhood Network. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you very much. Counselor, Mayor.
My name's Jamie Chaffey. I'm the Mayor of the Gannadah Shire Council and I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Good morning. My name is Eric Groth. I'm the General Manager of Gannadah Shire Council and I swear the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you. And whilst I'm on behalf of the Committee, I welcome you all to the hearing this morning.
Greg, just before we start to make, I think I should make one declaration, actually two.
Honorable Trevor Khan.
Sorry. The first is that my wife and her brothers operate a business that operates in this town and my brother-in-law and sister-in-law live in the town. I only make that declaration in case...
Fair enough. Thank you very much and what the honourable members has done is done the right thing as we do, a declaration of any matters that might be related to even implicitly, don't want to be explicit, implicitly with our hearing. So thank you very much, Honorable Trevor Khan, and that's noted. So what we'll do is effectively three groups organised to come and give evidence for this first panel this morning and your submissions have all been received, processed and duly updated, sorry, uploaded onto the Parliament's website. So with the roundtable, your submission, as I'm sure you know, is number 442 to this inquiry. With the Early Childhood Network, your submission is 272 to this inquiry, excuse me, and for the Gannadah Shire Council, submission number 63. And can I say with respect to the Shire Council, thank you very much for some additional documents that have been provided, they've been circulated and all committee members have a copy. I understand you're referring to some or all of that over the course of the evidence. Now, I'm going to invite each group to make an opening statement and invite you to keep it reasonably on point to enable the maximum time for the questioning to come from the members. There's no need to go through your submissions in detail, you can take them as read, committee members will read them, but if, file up a nice tight opening statement to set the scene and then we'll open up for questions. Just to confirm, we have a broad range of parties represented here today. We have members Kate Fairman from the Greens, Honorable Walt Secord from the Labor Party Opposition, Honourable Emma Hurst from the Animal Justice Party, myself from the Labor Party, Honorable Trevor Khan from the Nationals, Honourable Wes Fang from the Nationals and the Honourable Natasha McLaren-Jones from the Liberal Party. So there's a good coverage of all the political parties in this state, so that gives you plenty of opportunity to sort of address any particular points you want across that broad range of representatives. So if we start then with the Community Roundtable, would you like to sort of commence with your opening statement? That'd be great.
Thank you, Senators, for meeting with us today and thank you to my fellow Gannadah residents for sharing your experiences to inform our submission. I acknowledge the Gamilaro people, the traditional custodians of this land. I pay my respects to elders past and present and the emerging leaders to whom the future is entrusted. I recognise that due to the various structural, systemic and historical factors, the challenges to accessing healthcare are compounded for our Aboriginal community members. Today, I am representing the Gannadah Community Roundtable, a multidisciplinary interagency for organisations and community members to share ideas, knowledge and resources to develop local solutions to local problems. The Roundtable has around 200 representatives from 85 organisations working in aged care, homelessness, health, education, disability, employment, mental health and child protection. Across all of these areas, there is a consistent barrier to supporting the most vulnerable and disadvantaged members of our community and that barrier is access to healthcare. The lack of GPs in Gannadah is creating crises. A GP referral is required to access specialists and most allied health services. When a person is unable to access a GP, they are shut out of the entire system. This one limitation of service creates a ripple effect. How do we access NDIS services with no diagnosis? How do we access counselling without a mental health plan? How do we go to hospital if no doctors with admitting rights are available? How can chronic illness be managed without continuity of care? And how can we get a check-up with no one to check us? These are the unanswered questions that plague our community. Is it any wonder that we are sick for longer and die earlier? It is the most vulnerable people who suffer the most. Consider an older person with a disability. His doctor left, but he was not informed until he tried to book an appointment, when he was told that he was no longer a patient of that surgery and they had closed their books. Fortunately, he contacted a community transport provider who advocated for him to become a patient in another town and transported him to get essential prescriptions that prolong his life. Driving 140 kilometres, a two-and-a-half hour round trip for a simple prescription, this is outrageous and this happens every single day. Many of the Roundtable services have developed stop-gap measures, including transport, partnerships with GPs in other towns, providing space for outreach and directly engaging and paying for allied health services. It is not the responsibility of community organisations to fix the healthcare crisis. None of this should rest on our shoulders and every one of these interim solutions is bleeding resources from a sector that is already severely underfunded. The health system we all depend on is not working in the best interest of our community. We are tired of false promises from politicians and bureaucrats passing the buck. We were told in August of 2020, when the Rural Health Centre was absorbed by Hunter New England Health, that GP services were re-established. This was untrue. Ten months later, we are no better off. There are no GP services at that site. Where is the accountability? That site would be ideal for script clinics run by a nurse practitioner, for referral clinics to allied health, or if psychologists and social workers were empowered to do mental health plans, it could pilot from that site. But no, our state member, Minister for Innovation, refuses to innovate. Our federal member, Minister for Regional Health, refuses to provide healthcare for this regional town. So I thank you, Senators, for listening to us today and I implore you to make change. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs McGrath. To our next organisation, the Gannadah Early Childhood Network, can I invite one of the representatives to make an opening statement? Was that the intention, to have one, or did you both want to make a contribution?
We can kind of probably...
No, 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 I don't want to cut...
Sentence and sentence about it.
Yes, so...
We won't, look, we won't...
No, 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 listen, I don't want to trouble you, but if we just keep it reasonably tight to maximise the... but happy to share.
Sure.
I've been a resident of Gannadah for 23 years. I came here as a journalist, worked in PR for 10 years and I've been Director of the Gannadah Conservatorium, where we come into contact with 200 community members and their families on a weekly basis for 10 years. I'm married, I have three children, I'm actively involved in their school and sporting communities and I see daily the impact of the lack of our primary allied health services on our community. Likewise, I've impacted, I've witnessed the impact on our family and aging parents-in-law, as Mrs McGrath has just pointed to. I'm also a member of a group, Pediatric and Maternity Support, which raises funds for our local health service and has directed through grants and fundraising close to three-quarters of a million to our local hospital over the last 14 years since the birth of my first child. For this group, I've just got a couple of Atlantic dotes, much like what Mrs McGrath shared. One of our members who recently had a baby said she didn't see much support for young families in the town and mums with new babies shouldn't have to be driving 45 minutes to Tamworth to utilise services, they should only, they should have within their own community. She had one appointment with the community health nurses after the birth of her first child and, you know, she was probably, realises now, she was probably struggling with separation anxiety and a bit of postnatal depression. She had one visit that went for 10 minutes and that was the end of it. She was asked if she was happy, she said yes and she went home. So the issues people are experiencing, particularly in postnatal, are simply, there's not the time to identify them. Every person will have a story, like Miss McGrath has pointed out too. A friend of ours says she will drive Tamworth before setting foot in Gannadah Hospital these days due to numerous ordinary experiences over the years. It makes it a bit easier now that it's not so far for her, she lives halfway between the two towns. She cut a finger earlier this year and waited at the doors of emergency for over an hour before being acknowledged as arriving. She gave up, drove herself to Tamworth, she lost the top of her finger. You have our submission and it raises the concerns about the provision of health and allied services in the community and Rebecca Dryden will touch on that, but we're invisible in regional New South Wales. You only hear about us if there's a fire, a flood, a mouse plague or a drought. For the most part, the issues that we are experiencing on a day-to-day basis are ignored by the mainstream media, don't even make it to the Sydney papers. So I welcome the inquiry today, I welcome the members of the Legislative Council being here and listening and I look forward to some positive impacts.
Thank you very much, Mrs Dryden.
I'll be even briefer.
No, 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 please take your time.
My focus as the Chair of the Gannadah Early Childhood Network is around early childhood, which is zero to eight years. During this period of life, more than 90% of a child's brain is developed and everyone knows the statistics of a dollar spent in early intervention, you get a $13 payback later on in life. The New South Wales, this is evidence that's reported in paperwork from the New South Wales Government and accepted. The cost to our economy on a national scale is $15 billion in a recent report, so I don't understand why we can't invest more for our young children in rural areas where we just don't have the same level of service that they do in metropolitan areas. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now to the council, Mr Mayor, thank you very much for coming along with the General Manager. Would you like to make an opening statement?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chair. Firstly, I'd like to thank all of the committee members for coming to Gannadah to hear from, passionately from the people, as you've just heard also from other organisations. I'd also like to acknowledge the Gamilaro people as the traditional custodians of the land on which we gather and pay my respects to their elders, both past and present. What I'd like to do is start with the recommendation that council would like to see come from this inquiry. Then I'd like to move on to, there's four documents, so three new documents that we've tabled this morning, that I believe the members of the committee will have a copy of, and just highlight some of the information within those factual documents.
Thank you.
So firstly, as I said, I'd like to talk about what council would like to see as one of the major recommendations that comes from this committee, and that is that the state government establish a minister and ministry team for regional health, in line with the council's resolved position and the position that is now the position of the New South Wales Country Mayors Association. And the reason being to deliver on the endorsed recommendations of this inquiry, conduct a review of the LHD, or the Local Health Districts, and measure the level of delivery of service to the entire communities that are within their district and also for the value of money that's delivered. And to ensure that the state funding that may be required to effect changes as per the endorsed recommendations of this committee is made available. The topic of this inquiry is one of great importance for the community of Gannadah. From my conversations with the local people right across our community, and that's talking to also all of the medical professionals, whether they be doctors, community or allied health services, anybody who is charged with offering that medical care for our community has been a highest priority with my conversations. The issue of health and GP, lack of GP services is the number one priority for our community and issue that we're facing. The Gannadah Shire, as you may be aware, is a population of around 13, just short of 13,000 people and we are bucking the trend of population decline. Unfortunately, the ability of our community to access quality health services not only impacts on the quality of life of our current residents, but it also continues to limit the growth of our community and therefore our economy. So the first document that I'd like to refer to for the members of the committee is our actual submission, submission 63 of the inquiry that I believe received more than 700 submissions. And I'll be just quite brief as I refer to some of these documents.
Thank you.
So I'd like to refer to paragraph six in our opening statement, and that reads that local GPs are effectively running a crisis, medical service and preventative practice is non-existent. Those lucky enough to get an appointment with a local GP face long waits and appointments are significantly delayed or not sought until health complaints have escalated to a critical level. The concept of an annual health checkup with local GPs is a luxury that is simply not attainable for most local people. The complete lack of preventative care has a compounding effect, creating further demand on local services and in turn further escalates an increasing desperate situation. Undoubtedly, this will lead to the continuation of the ongoing decline of the health of our local community and the outcomes when compared against metropolitan populations will be dire. And it may be many years before we see the full extent of the problem that it becomes apparent within our community as to when we see it in health statistics. Also, in our submission, council conducted a quick poll of our workforce with the limited time that was available when submissions were first called for. The details are within our submissions, but shortly I'll also expand on a further community-wide survey conducted conjointly with the New South Wales Rural Doctors' Network and talk briefly about some of those statistics.
Thank you.
So that's all I'll say in relation to our submission that was put forward. Secondly, I'd like to refer to a document that members had before them, which is the Rural Doctors' Network State of Play Document, GP Workforce in Gannadah. In November 2020, council resolved to engage the New South Wales Doctors' Network to do three things. Firstly, to collaborate with council, Hunter New England Health and other stakeholders to identify short, medium and long-term approach to address the GP shortage within the Shire. Secondly, to consult with the representatives of medical practices in the community of Gannadah. And thirdly, to deliver a strategy that will list actions to address the GP attraction and retention for the Gannadah Shire to advocate to both state and federal governments to achieve change. So one of the first steps was getting a baseline. So the State of Play Document that I've tabled before you is a really good document that talks factually about the situation, medical situation within the Gannadah Shire and that stated the 15th of February this year. So I'd like to refer committee members to item 4.7.1, and again, it's a great document that I do table and I encourage committee members to continue to peruse through this at their leisure when time allows. But item 4.7.1 talks about the doctor-to-population ratio. Initial analysis undertaken by the Rural Doctors' Network shows that the Gannadah, shows that Gannadah is currently served by 4.7 full-time equivalent GPs, a ratio of one doctor to 2,700 residents, well below the desirable ratio of one to 1,000. The Rural Doctors' Network estimates that the bare minimum that should be required to serve a population is 13 full-time equivalent, or a desirable level would be more like 17 full-time equivalent. Now move on to item 4.7.6, if we may, in relation to books closed, so talking about GPs. As a result, large portions of our population are seeking their primary care needs outside of the Shire and this is now escalating to a level that is placing pressure on services in neighbouring towns such as Bogabai, Corindai and Tamworth. And I led to believe that in all of those locations now, there are GP practices that have closed their books because of the extra pressure that's coming from the Gannadah Shire. Next item 4.10.14, I'd like to bring to your attention. It's in relation to inpatient services. The shortfall means that patients requiring admission are regularly and necessarily transferred to hospitals outside of Gannadah, usually to Tamworth. The Tamworth-based hospital is an hour drive away and this is a two-hour round trip that places additional stress and pressure on families trying to support those who are ill. Not everyone is able or willing to travel to see a GP. People that can't or either, will either ignore their health complaints and not seek early intervention or attend the emergency department for care. Residents keep getting told how important it is, and we all know how important it is to get regular check-ups, to see your GP for tests and certain ages becomes more important than others. It would require taking time off work travelling to a neighbouring town, not everyone can afford to do that and I fear that this inability to access preventative care locally will have serious impacts on people living in regional, rural and remote communities like Gannadah in the years to come. Now, I want to be clear that we are very fortunate, we are very lucky to have great people working in our health system within the Gannadah Shire, which includes the doctors and all health service workers. These are dedicated people who do an incredible job with limited resources and under trying conditions a lot of the time. A new hospital is welcome and the news that that is coming, a $53 million commitment is one that certainly has the Gannadah Shire Council and the Gannadah community entirely quite excited about what difference that may make in helping us to attract doctors to come because they'll have a fantastic facility to work in. But currently, the lack of local GPs means that our hospital emergency department is now staffed mostly by locums. And the issue that we have in the Gannadah Shire is that locums are not, don't have the responsibility or the ability to admit to people who may need it into the Gannadah Hospital. So if you present and you need medical care outside of the emergency department, you are transferred to Tamworth if it's a locum because they are not able to admit you to the Gannadah Shire, to the Gannadah Hospital. Now, that causes major concerns and right through the document, and a further document that I'll talk about, the community survey shortly, there's some quite concerning statistics that go into there, especially when it talks about birthing within our community.
Mr Mayor, I say this reluctantly, we've only got effectively 20 minutes left for the panel for the questioning till we have to move on to the next panel.
Two more documents, two more points, if I may?
No, that's fine.
I'll be quite, I'll be as quick as I can.
Yeah, I'm sorry about the tightness of the time, but I just wanted to draw that to your attention.
I do appreciate the tightness, Mr Chair, but I think it is important that we are able to articulate just the concerns within this community if they...
Of course.
Look, I'll leave that document and as I said, it's a well worthwhile reading, that factual information that has been done by a very respected organisation in the New South Wales Rural Doctors' Network. The next document that I'd like to refer to is a Meral Minute that, let me just find my notes if I could, Meral Minute from the Gannadah Shire Council's April Ordinary Meeting. And that document itself, as it has been tabled, I'd like to refer you to motion two within that document. And that document reads that the New South Wales Country Mayors Association call on the New South Wales Government to establish a new ministry called the Ministry for Regional Health with responsibilities for driving urgent improvements to health services in regional, rural and remote parts of New South Wales. Now, the reason that I tabled that is to bring to your attention that that actual motion was unanimously supported by the Gannadah Shire Council, then put forward to the New South Wales Country Mayors Association at their May meeting and was unanimously supported as well. So now is the position of the New South Wales Country Mayors Association of advocacy to the state government. The last document I'd like to refer to quickly is the New South Wales, the New South Wales Rural Doctors' Network Results of a Community Survey, if I could.
Yep, briefly.
Now, very briefly, since lodging our own submission, which we did a straw poll basically of our own council employees because of the lack of time we had to put a submission forward, we, as part of that early work with the Rural Doctors' Network, the second component of that was doing a community consultation. So a survey which listed 21 questions went out to our community, we received 711 submissions, which is the largest single survey that council have done that have had a response from our community, which shows just the passion of our community about those concerns. So quickly, I'd like to refer you to three areas, 4.2.2, if I may. So this question was, in the past 12 months, have you been encouraged by your GP, GP practice to seek an appointment in another town? So this results were quite strong, with 69% of respondents have been advised by their GP to seek services elsewhere because they couldn't be accommodated within their practice here within the Gannadah Shire. So a very significant number. And we go on to item 4.2.3. This question relates to, in the past 12 months, have you been, made a choice to transfer to a practice in another town outside of the Gannadah? And 60% of the respondents stated that they had decided to transfer to a GP practice outside of Gannadah for their ongoing treatment in response to advice or of their own volition. That just shows the level of the issue and the acknowledgement of our community that you just can't get in to see a doctor for any support. The last item which I'd like to bring in follows, item 4.2.12, and I do know that I'm out of time, but there's a one sample statement there that really captures a lot of the issues and that were put forward by respondents. I won't read that because I can see, Mr Chair, that I've used more than my allocated time, but I would encourage members of the committee to read through that because it's a very true representation of the concerns of our community.
I can assure that we will read the material here. So the other one, it's about five and a half minutes each, so...
Thank you. I'm Walt Secord and I'm representing the Labor Party.
I'm Walt Secord, and I'm representing the Labor Party. My first questions go to Mrs. Ryan and Mrs. Dryden. Now, in your submission, you say that there are waits for paediatric services of up to two years, and there are more than 700 children on the waiting list. So, what are the things that these children are waiting for? What are the services that they're needing?
So, predominantly, the children that are on the waiting list are those that are not designated as a medical priority. So, if, let's say that you present with a case that your child is having difficulty breathing, you'll get in.
Yep.
In a flash. If you present with a referral because your child is having behavioural issues, you'll be on the waiting list for, well, I would speculate for longer than two years. And that's in the public system, with the community health. There is another private rural specialist practice in Tamworth that now has five paediatricians, which is fabulous, all fly in, fly out, but that's the nature of the beast these days. However, it is a private practice, so you will need to pay a lot of money to go and see a private paediatrician.
But as a parent, developmental issues would be as important to you?
Oh, in terms of early childhood, in terms of brain development, getting them ready for school, this is what we all keep talking about, is that we need to have our children ready for school. The Australian Early Development Census is still talking about one in five children is not ready for school. That's 20% of our kids are not ready to start school. How are they expected to do well and transition well into education and have a positive trajectory in life if they're not ready for school? So, we're talking about early intervention services that should be available across the board, and unfortunately, because we don't have universal services that cover children from birth through to school age, then a lot of children just get missed.
Okay.
Call through the cracks.
Okay, so we're a parliamentary committee and we make recommendations to the government. So, what do you want to see happen in regard to paediatric services in Gunnerdar?
I want a paediatrician in Gunnerdar.
You don't have a paediatrician?
We don't have a, there used to be a paediatrician that used to be delivered by outreach from Tamworth, and that's through the community health system. Unfortunately, they haven't been able to maintain their full-time equivalent, well, allocation at Tamworth, and so they've identified that they cannot reinstate an outreach service to Gunnerdar because they cannot provide.
Okay, so what do you do if you can't afford to drive to Tamworth, or you can't take time off work, or you're a single parent? What do you do for paediatric services in Gunnerdar?
You pray that once your kids get to school, the school helps them.
School helps them.
And it's too late. It's too late by then.
Can you give me an example of something, a paediatric service, that, something that a child, that you know, some examples that are desperate, without protecting the confidentiality?
Yes, of course, allied health in particular, OT, speech, even psychiatric and psychology services. Just speaking to the Rural Specialist Centre over in Tamworth with the five paediatricians at FIFO, they can give a referral for an OT, but you cannot find an OT. They are completely overrun with clients. Part of that is actually, it's a flow-on effect from the NDIS and anyone that's familiar with the NDIS, in terms of what that's actually done for the cost of services too. If you've actually got an NDIS plan, that's great, but if you're living in a rural area too, quite often you've actually got to pay out of your NDIS plan travel money for that person to actually get to you. If you're a private patient, somebody in the community health system, they're already overworked. We don't have the allocation for allied health, and this is something, we recently had a meeting with our local representative from the PHN and our fabulous new health service manager, who's now permanent at Gunnerdar, which we're really excited about, recently, and a whole bunch of allied health specialists that are in town, but they just, we need more of them. We are not allocated, and because we are so close to Tamworth, we're overlooked, we're expected to travel. And rural people, you may have come across this already, we just get on with it, and that's fine for people with resources. And I have very close experience with this. I have a child with a disability, but I have resources. I can drive, I can take my child to Royal Far West, I can travel to lord knows where for all of our specialist appointments. I have the resources to do that, but there's lots of families that don't.
So, what do you say to those, well, for example, in your submission here, you say that, in fact, at least a two-year wait. So, that a child could be waiting, in fact, longer than they've been alive?
Yeah. And quite often, that's what they do, absolutely, and the parents just have to wait till they get to school, and they hope school will sort it out. But schools are not the place for us to sort out developmental concerns for children. We need those services for them when they're young, when their brains are plastic, when we can actually have the most impact. The research is there, if you spend a dollar, you're getting $13 back. How do you argue with those economics? You cannot argue with that, but it's not a sexy topic, early childhood. We're not valued, early childhood. That's one of the purposes, the mission of our Gunnerdar Early Childhood Network. See the value of our children, invest in our children, and you will see the benefit in the long term.
Thank you. Ms. McGrath? Thank you, thank you for your submission. Now, you touched on access to a GP in Gunnerdar. So, what's the situation with GP services in Gunnerdar at the moment? Are the books open, are the books closed, and how long is a wait for a GP in the city?
So, I think currently, I don't think any of the surgeries are taking on new patients.
So, what do you do?
So, well, the roundtable worked together. Currently, GOCO, which is the Community Transport Service, they do a bus run to Tamworth three times a week, so that's, but again, that's two and a half hour drive to pick up a script. Winanali, which is the Aboriginal Child and Family Centre, they've partnered with TAMS, Tamworth Aboriginal Medical Service, to get outreach doctors once a week, but even then, they're only able to see maybe seven people a day, if that. So, realistically, what actually happens is that people just don't go until they present an emergency. That's.
I want to take you to it.
Can I just add that the books are closed, but also you might think you're a patient of a surgery, and then you ring and you find out that you're not anymore.
Yes.
So, my in-law.
Do you mind if I answer? Yeah. So, an example of that might be, so Dr. Parsons is one of our local doctors, wonderful, booked solid, overrun. When I was pregnant with my youngest child, I was able to see him, I was prioritised, there was no issues there. He took excellent care of me. However, when I was no longer pregnant, I was no longer able to see him. So, as a result, I'm no longer a patient at that surgery.
But Kate, my father-in-law had a fall in his driveway, had to go to hospital, was admitted to hospital, treated, all okay, was told to get a follow-up with his surgery, rang the next Monday to book into the surgery that he's been a patient of for 40 years. They said, sorry, your doctor's left here, you're not a patient of this surgery anymore. So, my family are accessing services in Tamworth, and they have ongoing medical concerns, so they now have a doctor in Tamworth. My son had a concussion, I couldn't get a follow-up appointment in Gunnerdar, he was seen in Tamworth because his doctor is no longer in Gunnerdar. His doctor that he last saw in Gunnerdar is now in Tamworth. I can't make an appointment at that surgery in Tamworth either because their books are closed.
Circle back. Okay, just one quick, so what do you do if you can't get into a GP?
You don't get into a GP. That's what we're saying. If you cannot get into a GP, you do not get into a GP. I don't understand what's hard to understand about that. We don't have doctors. If they aren't there, if you cannot get into a doctor, that's it, end of the line. You don't get to see a doctor.
And the evidence is that we're seeing a thousand more presentations to emergency in our region compared to metro areas.
So, what we would really like from you, in that specifically in terms of, there's been lots of discussion about how to get more doctors, nothing has come to fruition. So, we would really like to start exploring other options. Something we feel would be really beneficial is in the mental health space. Currently, you require a GP to do a mental health plan. You can't move into receiving services, receiving counselling, any of that, until you have that mental health plan unless you're willing to pay, unless you are able to pay. So, we would really like for you to make a recommendation that psychologists and social workers be empowered to do mental health plans, they have the skills, they have the expertise. No one's suggesting they should be able to write prescriptions, simply do the plans. That would make a massive difference in terms of relieving some of the burden off the GPs and also ensuring that people are able to get timely mental health services and avoid presentations at emergency, prevent those crises happening.
Thank you. I actually just want to pick that a little bit further out, Ms. McGrath. I know that you mentioned the mental health plans in your opening statement, but in your submission, you also talked about expanding the scope of duties for registered nurses to be able to perform. Can you give us a bit of an idea about what you have in mind there and whether that's a position you come to out of desperation because of the situation?
Absolutely. So, my understanding is that currently nurse practitioners who've done appropriate levels masters are able to take on some of those duties in terms of, you know, prescriptions and some of the assessment work. The issue that we have here is that if people want to further their career, they have to leave. That's just the reality. So, what we would really like to see is support for nurses who are already here, who are already embedded in this community, to upskill and be able to perform some of those duties that might then relieve some of the pressure from the doctors.
I mean, it sounds like the whole situation's very stressful. Are you finding that people are moving out of the area because of concerns?
Absolutely, absolutely. It's not uncommon, so particularly when people make a decision to start a family, when people are aging and develop more chronic health issues, they're sort of the two big points in time where people realise that Gunnerdar's simply not a viable option in terms of them remaining in the community.
Thank you. I've just got one more question for councillor Chaffee. You mentioned that there were long waiting periods. What's your understanding, what do we mean by long waiting periods? What's a typical waiting period for somebody?
Well, I might refer you to that document, the survey from Rural Doctors Network, and there's a particular point there which talks about some of the respondents that have come. So, the second point there, struggling to obtain an appointment in Gunnerdar, respondents spoke.
What page does that, has that?
It's item 4.2.
Thank you.
Of the Rural Doctors Network survey results. Unfortunately, it doesn't have a page number.
No, that's okay, thank you, you got the reference.
But if you go down to some of the comments on that second item, struggling to obtain an appointment in Gunnerdar, respondents spoke of competition to obtain the few on-the-day emergency appointments that are available within the few medical practices that are here. So, if you are actually able to see a doctor, if they will accept you, even if you're on their books, you still, if you don't have an appointment, you have to call. Several mention phoning up 100 times before being able to get through and then missing out on the appointment in that case. Others mention the frustration of either not being able to obtain an appointment or having to either attend the Gunnerdar Hospital Emergency Department to find a new practice or to find a new practice outside of Gunnerdar. Also, the next item, three, which is long waitlist for appointments in Gunnerdar, respondents spoke of waiting times between two weeks to three months or more. That's if you are actually able to be seen at one of the practices within Gunnerdar.
And is that, that three months, is that including quite extreme cases of health issues?
If you have an extreme case of issue with your health, you need to present to the emergency department of Gunnerdar. And of course, as I've stated before, the problem is, it's run by locums that aren't able to admit you to the hospital. So, if you are in need to be put into a hospital, you need to be put straight in an ambulance and sent to Tamworth.
Thank you.
Or, if not, it's an expectation that a family member or someone who might care for you would take you across to Tamworth if it's not an absolute emergency where you require an ambulance.
So, I think you mentioned earlier, councillor Chaffee, that GPs have closed their books here, but you mentioned that GPs are looking like in other areas of closing their books as a result of people from Gunnerdar going to other places because they've closed their books here. I mean, that's, what is, where does this end?
The real concern that I and the community have is for those people who, those doctors who've been serving our community for a very long time, that 4.75 full-time equivalent doctors that are here in this community, they are under enormous stress and pressure. We're concerned about how long they can sustain that before they simply just give up because the pressure is too much themselves. So, whilst the numbers are extremely low, we are at a critical point in our community of those who do provide medical care, of whether they can sustain that for their own health themselves for any long period of time. So, unless there's change, dramatic change in a short period of time, the community of Gunnerdar is at a crisis point, there's no doubt about it.
It certainly seems like there is, it is at a crisis point. You're talking about GPs having closed their books, and of course, then people go to the emergency department because they can't get any other work. What happened, they can't get seen anywhere else, but what happens at the emergency department? What are they receiving there? Are there enough doctors, nurses? Would you like to comment on that?
There are also comments within that document, and again, time won't allow us to go through that, but there are.
We do have the document in front of us. I'll just go to Mrs. McGrath, sorry, if that's okay. I'll have a look at that in a second. You laughed.
Yeah, no, that's hilarious, the concept of a hospital having doctors, that's like, what are you talking about? We have locums, many of the locums are here. So, essentially, like, we're at a position now where if you need to have a baby, make sure you have it on a weekday because you cannot have it on the weekend. That, you know, of the 4.75 doctors that we have, two of those are approaching retirement age. Like, this is kind of well beyond crisis point. It's not just the fact that we don't have GPs, it's that the same GPs that are serving the community through the day are then expected to somehow service the hospital as well. That if the locums can't admit, it becomes the responsibility of our local GPs to do that. It's ridiculous, it is absolutely obscene, and it is dangerous.
Mrs. Ryan? I just think it's important to note that lots of people will make the decision not to go to emergency at Gunnerdar, they actually will drive straight to Tamworth. If you think your child's broken an arm, you won't go to Gunnerdar, you'll go to Tamworth. And actually, if they end up breaking that arm, you'll end up spending the next few, six weeks over in Tamworth every week at the fracture clinic. So, I mean, like my friend who sliced her finger while cutting up a sourdough, she waited an hour, she didn't even see anyone, she was waiting at the door, and then made the decision to drive herself to Tamworth, and like, when she got there, it was quite significant. But, yeah, so people just, and normally, when you go over to Tamworth Hospital and you end up waiting with children, and, you know, knock on wood, I haven't had to do it many times, but I'm told it's a Gunnerdar reunion. Half the people that you meet in the waiting room or in the paediatric area are people from Gunnerdar.
And on that note, too. I'm sure this, sorry, I might just, I'm sure this isn't the first time that you've asked for help in terms of your health system here in Gunnerdar. What have you done in terms of lobbying and advocacy? I might go to Mrs. Dryden.
In terms of the Early Childhood Network, we initially went directly to Brad Hazard to, as the health minister, whereas a paediatrician. We're talking about early intervention, getting in early before things get more complex. We're starting at the bottom end, you know, the basic necessities. And it went back to the Hunter New England Health and said, look, I'm sorry, we don't have the resources to be able to provide a service to you. And so, then the Health Inquiry came along, and guess what? You guys have got the same thing, basically. Why don't we have basic services for our children? And the flow-on, it just continues in terms of the age span. The evidence is there in terms of what's happening in rural communities, they're aging, you get more complex cases, you need preventative care, not Band-Aid approaches where you rock up to emergency and hope for the best.
If I, can I just add to that question? I believe that was originally asked of me. If you look at the survey, item 4.2.12 is on emergency department results.
Sorry, Nick.
Yeah, so in that survey, item 4.2.12 just talks about the emergency department, comments that have been made from our community. And in my opening statement too, I talked about a quote that captures many of the issues from respondents spoke about, which is on the following page. And if I could just quickly read it, that would answer it in a nutshell, what the community positions.
I'm sorry, you can just give us the reference, because I do need to defer to the government members. So, just give us the reference if you don't mind.
Well, the reference is, this is from one person who presented to the emergency department because they're unable to secure an appointment either locally or out of town to see a GP. This person arrived at 10:15, was attended to by a doctor at 6:15, so some eight hours after, was very tolerant, was very, spoke very well about the nursing staff and the locum who finally did see her, but made comment about the fact the locum hadn't even had an opportunity to unpack his bag and his accommodation or even have a break because of the amount of hours that he had to do, and she overheard the locum say to one of the nurses, we really need two doctors here, of which this person agreed 100%. It goes on, but I'll, I'll pull up there. It's, it's a really typical response by members of our community.
What's the paragraph reference you're reading from?
Just the page number-
It's the survey, it's the Rural Doctors-
Is there a paragraph reference? That quote you just gave, was there a paragraph reference?
Look, that, what I just gave was through, throughout there, not just the paragraph. It's, it's, it is in the document in relation, it's the following page from 4.2.12. This document is a draft document. Unfortunately, there are no page numbers at this point.
For hand side, government members.
Sorry, if the members may also refer to graph 20, it illustrates that 711 responses to the survey by Rural Doctors Network, 239 of those responses presented to hospital, 123 of those were admitted to Tamworth. So less than half were actually admitted to Gundar Hospital on presentation.
And out of the obstetrics consultation 64 in Gundar, there were only 31 births in Gundar, so where were the rest?
Government members, who'd like to start?
Look, I'll, I'll start. Look, can I say, coming from Tamworth, I think the story of the shortage of GPs in Gundar has been as long as the 30 years that I've been in Tamworth, it's been a story that I've been aware of. Indeed, I did some of my practice here as a lawyer in Gundar, so very much alive, that this has been an ongoing problem for a very, very long period of time. So you don't need to convince me that there's a, there's a decided issue, but I'm interested in, you do accept, do you not, that this is not a problem that's simply arisen in the last couple of years? It's been an ongoing problem. And indeed, in a way, really reflects the time from when, would you agree, those old doctors who essentially started post-World War II, started to retire, so back in the 80s, it's been an ongoing problem with the change in the structure of general practice. For instance, you'll have in, in Gundar, do you not, that a lot of the, the GPs that you've got really have moved out of obstetrics almost entirely now. That's right, isn't it?
One of our main doctors, that's predominantly what he does. And he's very, very dedicated in that area. And I know two other doctors support him heavily there. So I, I don't know that that's actually-
I think a couple have moved, two, two have also left town.
Two of the, two of the 4.75 full-time equivalent doctors are still in obstetrics in Gundar. And certainly the problem has been there before. There's been previous moves by, by the community to try and improve the number of GPs and that was successful.
I think I remember Gay Swain talking about it.
That's exactly right, the honourable member. And unfortunately, the problem's far worse than it's ever been at the moment, down to 4.75. And those doctors, as has been already mentioned, are copping a terribly hard time. They're not only under stress and pressure of the work, but they're copping abuse from, from people in the community about, they should work longer hours, they should just see a few more patients and so forth. So it doesn't take too much brain power to work out, people aren't going to hang around in those situations.
Sure. So in, I've only just come onto this inquiry, so I went looking for some material to see. And I see that there's actually been some manpower analyses done across the, the medical profession and across Australia to look at this issue. And it seems to point, and I think particularly, I think it's Dr Anthony Scott from Melbourne University, looks at the change in the nature of the medical profession in terms of the percentage drop in the number coming out of university. If you're, for instance, going to the GP field as opposed to into the specialties, there's been a, a long-term trend away from GPs. Are you aware of that?
Yeah, absolutely. And I think there's a lot of incentives for people to move into specialising in a particular area. There's not a huge amount of incentive to be a GP.
Yeah. And indeed, there's also the problem of getting the GPs out of, say, Sydney, Wollongong and Newcastle as well. So there's combined problem. You'd agree with that. So what we seem to have is a problem in rural areas, not just in Gundar, but across rural areas, in attracting GPs to come and work in our communities. That fair?
That would be a fair statement.
All right. So if we've got that as the problem, that there's a central structural problem across indeed Australia, but certainly across rural Australia, in terms of A, getting GPs or getting graduates to go into the GP area, and B, getting them into rural areas, then what are the drivers that will change that long-term trend, do you think?
Trevor, I'm hoping that you're talking to a lot of doctors about this because they're the ones that honestly will be able to give you the answer to that. We're not doctors in terms of attracting those people out.
Let, let me tell you this, my father was a GP in Wollongong. And he was talking about it 20 and 30 years ago, the change in the profession, the fact that when he had a very large-
Point of order, Chair, point of order?
No, no.
Point of, no, it is a point of order, just in terms of like the time and just getting to questions. Point of order. I just urge you to, urge the member to ask questions of the witnesses as opposed to telling anecdotes and stories.
Let me in, I'll explain.
I think he's telling you his point now.
Let me in, I'll explain it. That, that 20 and 30 years ago, this problem was starting to come to the fore. And we haven't solved it in that 20 or 30 years, that's a problem. So if we're looking at it, I'd suggest to you, Mr Chaffee, you've obviously spoken to your federal member with regards to the level of Medicare rebates, have you?
In the table document you'll see from the council meeting, the first motion actually talks about, if I may just read it quickly.
Sure.
The first motion calls on New South Wales Country Medical Association to call on the federal government to formally acknowledge the rural and remote New South Wales governments, government areas are being seriously disadvantaged due to their lack of GP practices, to increase the Medicare payments of general practitioners who choose to practise in regional, rural and remote New South Wales, and three, reduce the Medicare payments of general practitioners in metropolitan areas to offset the increase of expenditure for regional rural areas. So basically, yes, had been speaking to the federal minister for regional health, and that was a position that was unanimously supported by Gundarshire Council, to look at ways that potentially is going to help impact or make an impact to try and encourage more doctors who are based metropolitan to come out into the bush. And that is the reason why Gundarshire Council also resolved to bring in the Rural Doctors Network, because we're not specialists in this particular field, but they are. And the reason that we've called them is to help with, help the community, discuss with the community medical professionals, to put a strategy forward with short, medium and long-term objectives that will give us the tools we need to talk to state and Commonwealth governments about what changes potentially should be made. And also, the reason that I put forward from council on behalf of our community, that recommendation or that wish that this committee, as part of your final document, puts a recommendation forward that there's a new ministry established for regional health with that minister responsible for changing the outcomes for people in regional communities.
I think you've probably got us all out of the line on that one.
Can I just add?
If you can, that and then I can-
I just, you're right, this isn't a new issue. So when I was at the Namoy Valley Independent, I, I covered a major event, John, John Anderson was the federal member, Michael Wildridge did a whistle stop, Wildridge did a whistle stop tour of all the regional towns, looking at this doctors crisis about 20 years ago. Gay Swain was mayor. One of the outcomes was train more rural kids to become doctors and they'll go back to rural areas. And I think that does work. And we actually have two doctors that grew up in Gundar around that time. They're working in rural areas, but just in Tamworth. So, you know, that does work. So, you know, a mechanism, close, you know, so, so, so a mechanism. But, but I think the thing is that the, you know, to, to the Greens' point about what have we been doing? We, we've been given lots of promises over the last 20 years. We thought the rural health centre was going to be answered. We thought training rural, rural young kids was going to be the answer. So over the last 20 years, we, every kind of five years, there's a promise of something is going to be better or change or it's coming, you just have to wait. We'll be sick of waiting.
Can I just say, in terms of, and Kate raised it earlier, the problem with the rural health centre was when, went out to tender, was it not? The people who actually responded to the tender were local GPs essentially.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So they didn't actually bring anyone else.
That's untrue.
I believe, I believe there was one.
So Tamworth Regional Medical Service did tender for that. They, because they were unsuccessful. And there was actually a proposition for several services to co-locate and reduce overheads and, you know, essentially enable them to make a bit more money and attract a few more people. So that is an untrue statement. There was a GP service that were willing to come out here, that were unable to, because the decision was made, to put services that we already have in that building.
Thanks very much. Now, I'll allow this one to go because there's obviously a, a group of organisations that has had much to say, so had well and truly more time than normally would allocate. But listen, I know we could go on, but we've got to move on to the next panel. So thank you all very much for the, the passion and play in which you put for your concerns about matters of health in Gundar and the region. Thank you much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Pleasure. So if we can just move on to our next panel. Okay, quick turnaround. Move on to our next panel. Thank you very much for coming along. So we move on to our next panel. So my commencement by the formalos of having your sauna affirmed in, so we'll start with Dr Scott. Your name, your position, title, swear either an oath or an affirmation, whichever you prefer, the words of which you before you. So, Dr Scott.
So I'm David Scott, I'm representing the Tamworth Medical Staff Council. So to take an oath, I shall swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you very much. And Dr Jones.
I'm Liz Jones, I'm an emergency physician at Tamworth. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. And thank you both for making yourself available to come along and give evidence today. And to both of you, we've got the, just to confirm, the submission for the Tamworth Medical Staff Council stands as submission 680 to this inquiry, it's been received, processed and stands as a submission on the inquiry's webpage. And we've got submission number 348. Does that stand in the name of, is that Dr Jones or? Yeah. That's Dr Jones, yeah. And so- Oh, okay, I do, okay, sorry. So I just want to make sure I was correct here. So we've got the second one then, that stands in the name of yourself, and that stands as submission number 348 to this inquiry, it's been processed and it sits on the inquiry's webpage. Now, can I invite an opening statement? But I've got to be tough hearted, I was with that program. I've got to be ruthless, as I'm reminded by everyone except my, I don't take my own advice.
We're looking forward to that, Chair.
Yeah, no, that's fine. So, so we're both here going to make, and I'm not being frivolous because we've just got to work through this. Did you both wish to make an opening statement because I need to take time and split it by part?
It's slightly different, I think, but I'll make as brief as possible.
And mine's, mine's quite short.
Yeah. So I'm sorry to do this, but if we, that maximises the time for the question. So please proceed.
So my opening statement will be fairly brief, so who I am, three reasons why you should listen to specialists in the country and two areas where you can put your attention. So I'm a gastroenterologist, so specialist physician working in Tamworth, serving an area of almost 200,000 people, which goes from the Queensland border to the upper Hunter and New Highway to the Great Dividing Range. And I represent the specialists at Tamworth Hospital and the physician group in particular, of which I'm one. And also, I'm married to one of the few paediatricians in Tamworth, so I've got some kitchen table experience of those issues as well. There are three reasons why I think we need to think about specialists. So I've read some of the transcripts and submissions and a lot of it focuses on general practice and that's entirely appropriate, affordable, reliable, local, sustainable general practice is the cornerstone of health service. But there are three reasons why specialists in the country also need attention. Firstly, I think it oversimplifies rural health to say that everyone who doesn't live in Sydney lives in a small town staff by one or two and close to retiring GPs. At least half of the people who live outside the cities live in or near regional centres and they expect local specialist care. And the second reason is that the ratio of patients to GPs is well known, it's worse in the country. In fact, the ratio of patients to non-GP specialists in the country is even worse. For example, if I worked in the city, I'd be expected to look after about 20,000 people in Sydney, while for almost 10 years, I was the only person for almost 200,000 people. So it's a big difference and it's a greater ratio than you'd see with GPs in the country. And thirdly, rural specialists support rural general practice. GPs in the country like to have a personal, local service that they can refer patients to the person they know, they can call me up on the phone, get advice, all this ad hoc sort of work that we do with the GPs. And the old model of a rural generalist who wants to and can do everything, that's not really going to be the way of the future. These new GPs will want to have local specialist services to help them to work in places like Gundar, knowing that there are paediatricians, gastroenterologists, other specialists nearby that can help them to maintain their quality of healthcare and locally. So there are two areas where I think we need to put the attention on rural specialists. Firstly, with workforce. Look, attracting doctors to this region is difficult for all the reasons that you're familiar with, but think about the specialist training pathway. They, they can't train in the country for the vast majority of specialties, they have to go back to the city. The training is longer than usually than that for a GP. So come the mid 30s, they've got a partner with a job in the CBD, a couple of kids in school, why would they leave Sydney to come to the country at that stage in their life? It's a very awkward time to move. So the troubles getting specialists here is harder. Local health services need more flexibility in being able to attract these specialists. Now, some of that's with financial incentives, obviously, sadly, but it'll be a flexibility to be able to say you can have a visiting medical officer contract as opposed to just be salary a doctor. Flexibility to say, we're going to create theatre space for a new surgeon, we're going to make theatre space for you to come, so you can come and work here. Flexibility with guarantees of how much on-call they're going to be able to do, other specialists you're attracting for their specialty. You know, all these flexi, that we need to have constructive, creative models that can attract specialists out of city by saying, here's a package which should look really attractive to you, come and move to Tamworth or places like that, so we can, so we can employ you there. And the second area I think that we need attention with rural specialists is with training. The rural, I'm sorry, the training colleges for specialists are inevitably urban-based and like their members are urban-focused, they don't appreciate the opportunities, but also the limitations of, of country hospitals for training. And so their workforce is heavily geared towards putting the trainees in urban centres, they're not supported as well when they come here. And we need to have trainees here so we can showcase what it's like to live and to work in these rural areas. And that's me.
Thank you very much. Just one and only quick question. When you say urban doctor, are you talking Sydney only?
Sydney, yeah.
Thank you.
Well, and Newcastle and Wollongong.
Sorry, so there is training in those respective cities as well?
Yeah, yeah, it's the big cities, yeah.
Thank you very much. Dr Jones?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Thank you for the opportunity to provide both the written submissions to the inquiry and to provide evidence today. My focus would be on the inequable treatment of junior doctors who decide to live and work in regional rural settings. This is an issue that affects all junior doctors during their hospital train years, regardless of their final specialisation, be that as a hospital-based specialist such as myself or as a GP working in a small rural town. As stated, I'm an emergency physician. I provide specialist emergency care in regional emergency departments, so in Tamworth at the moment, and I've been there for the last decade. During this time, I've been involved in the education and training of junior doctors, as well as in their recruitment and career progression, including their term allocations. Junior doctors often rotate to hospitals to gain different clinical experience. Currently, under the JMO award and employment conditions, metropolitan-based junior doctors rotating to work in regional rural settings will be paid increased salary and provided accommodation, plus flights back to Sydney every seven weeks, simply because they are rotating. This means that two junior doctors who are at the same stage of training, working the same role in a regional rural location will be paid differently, simply because one is rotating for a metropolitan hospital. This also impacts the rotation of the regional rural-based junior doctors to metropolitan locations, as they will have to find their own accommodation and there is no change necessary. This is a disincentive for junior doctors to work in regional settings. As was covered in the previous session, there are a number of factors influencing medical graduates' decisions to work in regional and rural locations. This includes being from a rural location and spending time in rural locations during training. The current award and employment conditions do not encourage junior doctors to work and live in regional settings. With the Chair's leave, I submitted two documents to table. These are specifically the JMO award, so the Public Hospital Medical Officers State Award of 2019. Obviously, it's quite a lengthy document. The relevant clause, just for the record, is it's clause 28, which is labelled second amendment, and that's where the conditions are being paid of an increment and travel every seven weeks back to Sydney, it's covered. And then the other document is a New South Wales Health Policy document, which is employment- which is employment arrangements for medical officers in New South Wales Public Health Service. And in there, paragraph six, which is rotations to country locations, is where salary increase is reinforced and accommodation if rotating is also included there.
So Dr, just with respect to the award itself, the Public Hospital Medical Officers Open Book of State, Place Book of Award 2019, where is the clause for the rates of pay? I've got the allowances off the back.
Oh, there's a separate document.
It's a separate document?
There's a separate document.
On notice, I'm wondering, on notice, if you provide the.
Yes, I can provide that.
Rates of pay, which probably is part C, I presume. So, so thank you very much. So just to confirm though, there's actually three documents. There's the one that's the RACPs. Was that yours, Dr Jones, or was that?
No, that must have been mine.
No, no, that's fine. So there's Dr's.
Oh, you've got that photo, yes, well done, thank you.
Okay, no, that's fine. And the policy directive. So thank you very much. The Honourable Officer.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I love you like a brother. Dr Scott.
Ten minutes each.
Dr Scott, earlier you said that the Tamworth Hospital services about an area involving 200,000 people. Now, how many operating theatres are there in the hospital?
So we've got, we've got five operating theatres, which run all day, you know, five days a week. One of which is just for emergency cases, you know, not booked. And the other, the other, the other four are for the elective procedures and semi urgent cases.
Doctor, I'd like you to clarify that. Because in the submission, it says that Tamworth Hospital has eight operating theatres.
So there are rooms, yep, so there's this.
But only five are funded. So there are eight, but only five in operation. So what's happening to those other three operating theatres?
So currently, one of them's being used as some catch-up from the backlog from the COVID shutdowns. But otherwise, that'll, that'll be empty. And then they're used for storerooms and places to make a quiet phone call. And that's, that's the use at the moment.
So, so you have in total eight. And at others, at most times, you use up to, you're now using up to six.
Five are allocated.
Five are allocated.
In a normal situation.
And the two or three empty ones are used for a quiet space, storage and to make a telephone call. Maybe you'd call up your wife, call up your girlfriend, that kind of stuff.
For some people, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So if you have 200,000 people, what could those three? Are you familiar with something, a concept called ghost wards, ghost operating theatres?
Kind of, yeah. So the, my submission initially was targeted on the issue of ear, nose and throat surgeons to this region, of which we have none. Twenty years ago, when I was an intern at Tamworth Hospital.
What surgeons?
Ear, nose and throat.
ENT, sorry, yeah, sorry.
So twenty years ago, when I was an intern here, there was an ear, nose and throat surgeon. Did a wonderful job, retired and hasn't been replaced. One of the issues is that at the moment, if an ear, nose and throat surgeon said, look, I love Tamworth. I want to move to Tamworth. I put my kids in school, I bought a house, you know. The hospital, I'm not sure, would be able to offer them operating theatre time, which for a surgeon is, you know, just their job. I'm not sure whether they'd be offered, able to offer them a VMO contract or a staff specialist contract. And certainly the award they'd be offered would be identical to the award they'd be offered at the hospital in the next suburb where they're currently living in Sydney. There's no incentive to come here, there's no guarantee. Why would you really, it's already a huge cost to come to, to come to a country area. Why would you come when there's that little guarantee that you're going to be able to do the work you want to do?
Okay, so, so these three empty theatres, could you, in fact, are there, is there enough patient need that if you had the doctors or you had facilities, that you could fill up those three empty theatres?
So we could certainly use more. But what, and while we'd like to deal with the backlog that people who are waiting that we'd like to see quicker, that's obviously be great. One of the big opportunities to use those theatres would be to get new services to Tamworth. Ear, nose and throat, vascular surgery, plastic surgery, more oncology surgery, for all the things that the patients at the moment have to travel to Newcastle. And while, you know, Gunner Dara's an hour from Tamworth, Tamworth's four hours from Newcastle or six hours, five or six hours from Sydney. It's, these are long trips that could be avoided if there were more diversity of local specialists.
But isn't Tamworth one of the largest country cities in New South Wales?
So we have the busiest emergency department outside the metropolitan areas. We are one of the biggest hospitals. And so as you've heard this morning, you know, plan B is always go to Tamworth. Well, you know, we are Tamworth. We get a lot of referrals from Tenterfield, at Coona Barabrun and Walker and, you know, Marandai. All these places, they, they come to us. And so we're struggling to, to have enough specialists and enough diversity of specialists to cater for them.
Now, what about the impact of Gunner Dara Hospital on Tamworth? Wouldn't it be, wouldn't it be easier for patients? If patients were actually treated at Gunner Dara Hospital and admitted into Gunner Dara Hospital? Rather than going to Tamworth?
Look, the hospital, the staff and in particular the GPs I know in Gunner Dara do an amazing job. Well and above and beyond what any other GP we expected to do. They are priceless in terms of their value to the health system. But obviously, if they could hang on to people here, that's a few people that we need to look after over there. And we try and support them as much as we can with, with keeping people here if they can. But as, with issues of admitting rights and who's going to look after them, it's piecemeal and patchy and inadequate.
But can we go back to the three empty operating theatres? So don't you, don't you find it ludicrous that there's 200,000 people in the whole region? That it must be, isn't it frustrating to see three empty theatres? Do you find that frustrating?
Very, very frustrating, yeah. Aside by the submission, yeah.
So, so what can the Berejiklin government do to get doctors and get patients in those three ghost theatres?
To appreciate that looking after a patient in the country costs more than looking after a patient in the city. You can't just apply the same award, the same funding models to Tamworth and Gunner Dara as you do to Mona Vale and North Shore. You need to have a flexibility, management needs to be able to offer a package which is going to attract new specialists, the specialists where there are most efficiency to an area. And so we can use those theatres to improve services.
Now, you said that you've been here for 20 years.
I here, 10 years this time. I did my first two years here, then I had to go back to the city to specialise for eight years and then back here after that.
Were you born and raised here or did you, did you come here?
No, I came here straight from university, from Canberra, my wife from the coast on the, on the farmer, near the coast, so.
So, okay, so you, you've come here, you stayed, you loved it, that kind of thing.
Still love it, yeah.
And what attracted you to Tamworth?
So one of the incentives seemed, schemes to get doctors in the country is as medical students to pay them. So I could marry my wife at university. We got a scholarship and that supported us through the last two years of university. And so then we had to repay that scholarship by coming somewhere country. And so we chose Tamworth for a few different reasons. We had a great time here professionally and personally. And we knew we'd always end up working somewhere like Tamworth in, once we specialised. So once we had specialised, we looked around and, and Tamworth was the best fit for us at that time.
Now, retrieval or, or not retrieval, but air services to Sydney and that. So what patients would be, would fly, would you send from Sydney up from Tamworth to Sydney?
Medically, as in it would be retrieved. Dr Jones might be better actually at answering that one, is it?
We should ask about Newcastle as well.
Oh, sorry, I stand corrected, I meant Newcastle or Sydney, sorry. Thank you, Chair.
It's all right.
So obviously, that will depend on their condition. So looking for subspecial service such as in neurosurgery, cardiothoracic. So say someone who's had, the common thing would be someone's had a brain injury, a head injury from trauma. The cardiothoracic, so someone's had significant chest trauma. Somebody's had significant trauma, say to their pelvis, again during an injury. To Sydney, we will send people who've had acute spinal cord injuries. And probably the largest group we either transfer medically or the patients will make their way down there is actually burn surgery. So particularly as the winter months come, expect to see, as usual, large numbers of small children who've burnt themselves. Will be, usually make their way privately to Westmead Children's Hospital. Fortunately, very rarely are they unwell enough to need medical treatment, but definitely the services provided there. Adolescent mental health services are based in Newcastle.
Doctors, in our time, before I pass over, we've still got companies. Dr Scott, the matter of the cost of treating patients, you said in an answer to the Honourable Secretary of Health, the cost of treating patients as a general statement is more outside the major cities. And forgive me for my ignorance here, but with respect to the calculus used by New South Wales Health, with respect to looking at its local health districts, is it, is that factored into the way in which the funding is looked at? In other words, and if you don't know the answer, you don't know the answer. But in terms of obviously those LHDs, which obviously either mainly or totally exist out away from the, the major population centers Newcastle City will ongoing, I'm, I'm wondering whether or not those are looked at through the lens of the treating of patients is X more percent or some other formula for the determination of, of the cost, which factors into the way in which the budgeting is done for that LHD. Can you shed any light on that?
Look, I'm not, I'm not sure. I think you're talking to Mr Darienzo this afternoon, I think.
Yes, no, that's, I just, I bowled it off. Yep, no, that's fine. No, that's fine, thank you, Doctor. Honourable Emma Hurst.
Thank you. Dr Jones, you talked in your opening statement and obviously in your submission as well about the inequitable treatment of junior doctors that actually reside in the regional areas. Are you finding that regional junior doctors are actually leaving out of frustration because of their concern about the difference in conditions?
They, they often have to leave due to training requirements. But as was also mentioned earlier, people who choose to, to live in regional centres often just get on with it. And so the ones who have chosen to spend most of their time in Tamworth, but then wish to do a, say a subspecialty term in Newcastle because they wish to enter the surgical training programme, they wish to do one of the various subspecialty terms down there, they will often just stay with university friends and basically they manage to find a way around it.
And so do you find that probably the biggest area it's affecting is actually recruiting people into the area that will live in the area? Is that the biggest issue?
Yes, it can be an issue in terms of it. It also sends, in my opinion, it sends a view that if you go and work in a regional centre, you're worth less than someone who's rotating from a, from a metropolitan centre. I suspect that's the, the bigger issue, that it paints a picture that we're worth less because we live and work in a regional centre than someone who's rotating from a medical centre. It also does reflect a previous, the previous view of, you know, to staff places regionally, you had to send people from metropolitan centres. The idea that people would want to come and work in a regional centre just because they want to come and work and live in a regional centre was, is, is sometimes difficult. People don't understand and that we can actually be the place where people base their training. And then they, as in David's case, to gastroenterology, you do have to spend a significant proportion of time away. But in my training programme, you don't, in terms of emergency medicine, you don't have to spend quite as much time away. But the idea that people could stay with us and rotate to a metropolitan site to do their extra training as opposed to be based in a metropolitan site and rotate to us, it's just a different mindset that those living and working metropolitan centres don't always quite understand.
So what, with all that in mind, what sort of recommendations would you like to see come from this inquiry, particularly around the unequal pay and other incentives to ensure that there are people retained in those sort of regional areas?
To level the playing field in the first place.
Yep.
It needs to be, needs to be level. It's not level at the moment. Then becomes a separate issue of actual, of actual incentives to encourage people to live and work in and train in regional settings.
Thank you. Dr Scott, my colleague was asking a lot of questions about those unfunded operating rooms. And I think your submission also talked about one of the ways to actually attract additional staff is to have more operating space. So when we're talking about an incentive package to encourage more people to move into the area, you know, what needs to come first? How do we actually structure that so that, you know, I know obviously we've all been talking a lot about financial incentives, but there's more to it than that. So, you know, how does the government actually approach this to build and make it work?
I think if, say, if we're going to use a case study of the ear, nose and throat surgeons, you'd go to the ear, nose and throat surgeon and say, look, this is how much operating theatre time we'd like to give you a week. We'd like to, we're actively recruiting a second one so that at most you'll be on call one in two. We guarantee that we're going to give you this much money to travel, to see your family in Sydney or to get education, because obviously if you're only one of a specialty in an area, you can't get your education in that area. We're going to maybe incentivise you with financially, be giving you an out of award package that will suit you and, and that we can make it work as well. And here it is on paper, please sign at the end, you know. And that's the way, rather than wait for them to come to you or put a job in a paper saying, we're going to give you the standard award. And when you turn up, then we can start talking about whether there's theatre time or not. That's what's happening at the moment and that's clearly why there's no one here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Dr Scott, I just wanted to pick apart a little bit something in the submission of the physician group Tamworth Base Hospital, which I understand you're also a member of. So you raise the issue of basic physician trainees and the lack of basic physician trainees in your submission. On the last page, you say that the, or you wrote the submission, did you prepare the submission?
No, Dr Stephen May did, who couldn't be here today, he's away. But I'm happy to speak to it, yeah.
Yes, great, okay. So Hunter New England Basic Physician Trainees Network would like to expand the registrar numbers in Tamworth, but is being blocked by senior executives who refuse to fund Tamworth appropriately. The submission refers to multiple meetings, I understand, with the local health district, who it says here, who all agree that there is a clear discrepancy that must be addressed, but nothing happens because there is no funding. Then the submission refers to the local executive, which does not have any decision-making authority or financial power. This inevitably results in resources being allocated to the Hunter area rather than being allocated on equity and need principles. So firstly, there's a clear frustration that the local executive doesn't have any decision-making or authority. If you could just reflect on, or sorry, or financial power, reflect on that. Because that's a change in the way in which our health services are managed, isn't it?
So I guess there's a history behind this, which, for which you'd be aware, that health services used to be very big and then they were decentralised largely. And so most country areas are run by country hospitals. But ours is, I think, almost unique in that we have, Newcastle is our head office, which is obviously very urban, but covers a huge rural area as well. So there's a sense amongst the doctors, specialists at Tamworth Hospital, that local decisions, local problems can't be solved by local people. It has to be solved by people in the head office in Newcastle. And there's a perception that, of course, if you work one floor below the chief executive in Newcastle, you're more likely to get his ear than some doctor who knows who, Adam wherever, who just has to write an email and has never put a face to the name. So there's a frustration that perhaps local decisions can't be made because of the way our, our area is structured.
How, how important is it from your perspective to be able to have that local decision-making power over the health needs of your local community?
It's very important, it's very important. I think, yeah, I think, look, I think it's local, local problems are best solved locally for these sort of issues. Because every geography is a little bit different and having no ENT, but lots of whatever specialty, you know, might, might be different to how other hospitals are run. I think also the training colleges need to have some ownership of this as well. They're national in general, they don't appreciate local issues. And in my experience, they're just as culpable because they make all these requirements about what training must look like. And, and smaller hospitals find it hard to reproduce that. They're sort of designed around city hospitals. And I think the document that ends up in front of the diagram shows what disproportionate amount of trainees are in the cities as opposed to where the patients are, which is, you know, 30% at least in the, in the regional areas.
And so you advocate for increased funding, the need for increased funding in Tamworth to the LHD, who seems to agree, but nothing of course can happen because it's not the LHD who, who, well, the LHD is deciding the funding, is that correct?
So it's one of these other situations where the, the college just determines what those training requirements are, but they don't fund any of the training positions. That's up for the hospital system to fund the training positions. And obviously, their trainees maybe are from Newcastle, want to stay in Newcastle, they're easily employed in Newcastle. And so that's where they seem to be disproportionately retained. And fewer of them, you know, as Dr Jones was saying, it used to be this model of having to, you know, toss a few out to the country to, you know, do some work there. Well, you know, we're, we see a lot of people here, we can provide really good training. Our trainees like spending time with us. But we have vastly inferior ratios of trainees to patients than the city hospitals do.
Thank you.
We'll move to the government members. Can I just address, Dr Scott, that, that last observation? Hasn't there been a meeting between Michael D. Darienzo and, and local physicians in the last couple of weeks over this basic physician training issue?
Yes, so that issue has improved recently with, with three new ones.
With three more. So the questions that Ms Fairman was asking you with regards to the position, actually, between the time the submission has been made and now, there's three additional basic physician, trainee physicians being created in Tamworth.
Which is still well below what the ratio would be if, if in the city.
I'm not down in that, but the position is, I think the, the proposal was for four extra in the submission.
The proposal was for eight more. That would, that would enable us to have a 24-hour service like Tamworth needs and other hospitals have.
Thank you for the consideration of the submission.
Just, just, just for your record.
Just for your record, the gentleman you referred to, just for your record, who's the gentleman you referred to? What's his title?
Derienzo. He's the chief executive of the Hunter New England area.
No, no, okay, but I'm saying for the purpose of hands out in the record, I think we need to know.
We're very grateful for that progress, but it came at the point where we basically had to tell the trainees college that the conditions that they are being employed under in Tamworth were not fair on them and certainly not what the college was expecting. And we had to risk being de-accredited as a hospital, which means our registrars would not be able to be accredited for the time they spend with us. We had to risk putting them on the table, which is a big hand to play, for us to make this sort of last minute move to get some more, but nowhere near what actually we need.
Now, were you aware that when the health districts were being restructured, a lot of them were broken up again, that actually it was the specialists particularly in Tamworth who argued against the breakdown of the Hunter New England area health service? They didn't want to go back to what it existed before.
My information's different to that, but I haven't got numbers.
Jeez, I remember sitting in those meetings, doctor. I remember very well sitting in those meetings where they argued against.
And if Tamworth's problems were unique in rural New South Wales, then maybe we could discuss that further. But I think there are problems widespread here, which I'm trying to stay at a bigger level.
Thank you both for appearing today. Dr. Jones, I just wanted to touch on your, I guess, testimony first, if you could. When you're talking about the medical officers in the hospital that are employed by the hospital under the award that you've provided to us today, that's for residents, registrars and the like to actually come and work in the hospital, be based out of Tamworth and are employed at that hospital, correct? And when you're referring to those that are seconded, you're referring to doctors that are employed by, say, a hospital or a health service that's outside of the area, potentially Sydney or the like, that have actually, I guess, paid for rent or a house or have their family based there and then are seconded to supply that medical service to Tamworth. Is that...?
It will vary. Basically, the training programmes often, the vocational training programmes will often rotate their trainees to Tamworth's private service. At the same token, you'll have, say, emergency medicine trainees rotating, I'm sorry, when the, when the trainees are rotating private service in Tamworth, the training programmes, they're also training. So Tamworth is providing their training and education as well. It's not just a service provision. And when Tamworth-based trainees rotate to, say, Newcastle or to, into Sydney, which is pretty seldom because of the conditions, they are, they are under the same conditions that, say, those people from Sydney are rotating up with their families left in Tamworth and paying rent in Tamworth as well.
I guess what I'm looking at is those that are seconded into Tamworth are doing so usually through, for a training provision that they're under, say, with the Children's Hospital or from John Hunter with one of their training programmes. Is that usually how it is? Or is it, or are they actually just coming here to provide a medical service as per what the hospital would require?
There's always a combination of training and service provision and definitely we're a, we're a training hospital. And so we are training every day. Both David and I are training junior doctors who also in their turn are training the junior docs below them.
So the, the doctor that's coming under secondment and the doctor that's employed by the hospital, they're performing the same role, but they're effectively doing it under different circumstances. One is, I guess, maybe training for a position and one is actually working within the hospital. Is that correct? So they're not really, so when you say, so when you say that they're actually being paid differently for the same job, they're not really doing the same job, are they?
Yes, they're doing the same job. They're doing the same job. They're providing the same care to the same patients.
Well, that's correct, but they're, they're under different programmes of training, isn't that correct?
No.
Okay.
But they might be under a different specialty training programme, but within that same specialty training programme, they are, they are providing the same care to the same group of hospitals. So same, same care to the same patients.
No, I accept that. I just, I think it's, there's got to be an acknowledgement that people may be doing the same role, but they're doing it under different circumstances. And that's what this award recognises. And so I just wanted to tease that out and see what it is that you considered was different in the role. It was different in the way that the role was being provided.
It's the same, it's the same role and people who rotate elsewhere. So emergency medicine trainees who need to go and work in other locations and they have to work in a church or hospital. There's a requirement in the, in the training programme. If they rotate out, they will work the same role that their fellow emergency trainees will do in, say, that Sydney hospital, that Newcastle hospital, leaving their family in Tamworth, chattering back and forth. So they're doing exactly the same role, but they won't, they, via this award, they will not be provided any support for accommodation. They will not be provided flights back to see their family. They will not be paid up a grade, whereas their colleague who's providing exactly the same, the same service and being trained in exactly the same way will not be paid that.
So can you just ask, what is the grade worth if you're being paid up the grade?
Yeah.
What's it worth?
It would, I'd have to take that on notice to make sure I get it absolutely right. There's also the accommodation cost, which is, which is a major issue.
Particularly going into the city.
So I guess the final part of that is, what is the solution then to actually make sure that people are paid on similar awards or similar rates for the same job then?
If you are moving for your, for education and training and to provide a service, you should be treated the same way. So be that if you're coming from Sydney and coming to Tamworth, or if you're going from Tamworth and you're going to Newcastle, Sydney, you all should be treated the same. Your employer is basically being part of the role of moving you. And so you should be, you should be paid the same, you should be paid the same allowances essentially, for use of the term that people recognise, allowances and conditions if you are moving around the state to further your education and training and to provide a service rather than what we have now.
Can I just follow along? Who are the parties to the award? Obviously, New South Wales Health is one.
I would have to take that on notice in terms of the exact details.
Has there been any representation, and this is not a criticism of you, has there been any representation made by you to the employee associations with regards to your very genuine concern?
I have raised it in talking to ASMR, the Australian Cellular Medical Officer, with the extent of, also in meetings at state level with New South Wales Health. It was also raised by our state member in Parliament in 2018 following an inquiry from one of the other specialists at Tamworth.
Well, taking into account that this is an industrial award, it's going to be between the parties, I'm not being critical of anyone in that regard, but it would require either the respondent, unusually to the award, that being New South Wales Health, to either make an application to vary the award, or the representative professional body to make the application. I understand what you're saying and the legitimacy of it. I'm just wondering why that application has not been made up until this point.
I understand that it's a difference. I'm not saying it's a simple issue. And it's, part of it's the award and part of it's a policy directive. And so the award covers the salary and the flights. The policy directive, which is not industrial award, covers the accommodation issue. So definitely not suggesting at all that it's an easy issue. It's more to raise, to raise this as an issue and that you have junior doctors who are being treated differently simply because they live in the bush.
Right. So there's, I know accommodation is available, he, sorry.
No, no, no.
Yeah, accommodation is available in Tam, sorry, in Tamworth. Is that same style accommodation provided, for instance, down at John Hunter or at the Marta?
No.
Really? So it all has to be on the private market down in the industrial environment?
The point, Dr. Jones, is it's been raised and rewritten. It's been ventilated over a period of time, the point you're making. It's not a new issue.
No, it's not a new issue. It's been recognised for a long time.
I'm not taking it.
Dr. Scott, Dr. Jones, in this submission here, there's one sentence that jumps out. There are long periods of time where junior staff do not have medical registrar. What does that mean?
Which submission?
There's the physician.
Yes.
What page?
It doesn't have a page on it, but it would be page two of the submission, if it was numbered.
Just with, Dr. Shook.
If it was numbered, it would be page two. Can you tell me, what's the certain situation?
Just let me find it.
Is this problem assessment in that subsection, you go down and, one, two, three, about ten sentences?
So it goes on to the next line, support including from 8pm to 8am.
So, what does that mean? So does that mean these junior doctors are working overnight with no senior doctors?
That's become a big issue recently. So, so most, you know, urban hospitals would have junior doctors working overnight and then there'd be a registrar or, you know, a trainee from each of the major specialties and inevitably of a medical registrar, at least one who would cover the issues that occur on the wards or through emergency department overnight. So Tamworth doesn't, until recently, had any sort of medical registrar overnight. So after, you know, 9.30, 10 o'clock at night, when the, when the one goes home, then we've always relied on the senior doctors in the emergency department and the intensive care unit to look after our medical patients after hours. And clearly they're getting busier and realise that's really outside their, their sort of zone as well. And so recently there's been a stopgap measure to have some locum medical registrars overnight, but it's inadequate. It's really why we need vastly more than the three extra medical registrars that have been given to us recently to actually staff a 24-hour medical registrar roster.
Okay, so how much experience would these junior staff have? Are these, are these young men and women fresh out of medical school?
So usually first one, two, maybe three years out of medical school. First one or two years, yep.
One or two years.
Out of medical school.
And a registrar, how much experience would a registrar have?
Maybe the junior would be three or four years, maybe as many as six.
So what, so what is, okay, so what does a junior doctor do who's working nine o'clock until eight o'clock in the morning? What do they do if they get into trouble?
So they would, until recently, have to go to the intensive care unit, doc senior doctors or the emergency department senior doctors to get some advice. They're always welcome to phone up the specialists, but you know, some issues can only be solved by people on-site. So that's, that's the process that I've worked so far.
So how, how long was this situation in place?
Until the locum medical registrar overnight started in the last few months.
So how long, how long was Tamworth Base Hospital?
Without medical registrars overnight? Well, whenever it started until then, so.
Well, or perhaps on notice, if you're able to establish when that was, that would be appreciated.
In the 1800s, I think.
Eighteen hundreds, that's. No, that's fine. Eighteen hundreds, that's. Listen, on behalf of the committee doctors, thank you very much, not just for coming along today because I know you're very busy, but to acknowledge your professionalism and the work you do on behalf of your community. You're obviously exceedingly well-regarded, both of you, and I'd like to pass on our thanks to yourselves. If you could pass on to your colleagues the great work you do on behalf of the citizens of Tamworth and the region. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Move on to our next panel. Great, thank you. Everybody ready? Okay, we will move on to our next panel of two witnesses, Ms. Ryan and Ms. Warboys. Thank you very much for coming along. I'll get through the formalities first, which is to have you sworn or affirmed with your evidence. So I'll get you first of all, starting from my left. Ms. Ryan, to state your name, your position, title, if you're representing a particular organisation today. I understand you're a private citizen, but if that applies. And swear either an oath or affirmation, whichever you choose, the words which would be before you. So we'll start with Ms. Ryan.
Thank you. My name's Kate Ryan. I'm a registered nurse from Tamworth. I'm representing myself as a nurse working in the public health system.
Thank you.
I solemnly, solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. Ms. Warboys, am I pronouncing that name correctly?
You are indeed.
Thank you.
My name's Elizabeth Warboys. I'm representing as a private citizen, but I am also a registered nurse and health service manager for the local district. I'm also at the moment a patient and a carer and a person who's lived in the rural sector all my life. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thank you very much. Once again, thank you both for making yourself available. Now, with respect to your submissions, and you both made submissions, just wishing to confirm, Ms. Ryan, your submission is submission 239 to this inquiry. It's been received and processed and sits on the webpage for the inquiry. And with respect to Ms. Warboys, yours is the same, except it's notated as submission number 501. So all committee members have had a chance to read your submissions. So in your opening statements, no need to go through what's in the submission in detail. Perhaps just keep them reasonably short and that will open up the time for the maximum questioning. So I invite you both, starting with Ms. Ryan, to make an opening statement. Ms. Ryan?
Thank you very much. My name's Kate Ryan. I'm really pleased to have the opportunity to speak today. I'm speaking as an individual working within the New South Wales Public Health System. I've been a registered nurse for 17 years, graduating from the University of Sydney in 2004 with my Bachelor of Nursing degree. Subsequently, and at my own expense, I have completed three graduate certificates in nursing education, intensive care nursing, and more recently in diabetes education and management. I'm now studying my Masters in Nurse Practitioner Studies through the University of Sydney again, and I'm due to complete this course in November this year with the intention of becoming an endorsed nurse practitioner specialising in diabetes management early next year. At this stage, despite me investing my time to improve the public health system, there has been no reciprocation from New South Wales Health to create a diabetes nurse practitioner position for our area or any planning for this to occur. I am speaking today to address issues around nurse practitioner recruitment and to promote the role of the nurse practitioner in regional and rural New South Wales. I see this as offering possible solutions to some of the issues facing clinicians and patients regarding their diabetes management in particular. There are several Medicare item numbers available for nurse practitioners to use in private practice and in public health sites which have a 19/2 exemption in place. And I have tabled that document for your reference. Nurse practitioners are also able to claim these numbers, Medicare item numbers.
Just before you, that's the document which is headed, improving access to primary care?
Correct.
Thank you very much. Please proceed.
Globally, diabetes is the fastest growing chronic condition. It affects 280 Australians who are newly diagnosed every day. This is equivalent to one person every five minutes. Diabetes is currently the sixth leading cause of death globally. It is an expensive disease. It costs our economy an estimated $14.6 billion every year. The in-hospital costs account for about 43% of this expenditure. So it makes sense to me to invest in an area that is targeted at preventing hospitalisations and complications associated with diabetes. Diabetes rates are higher for those living in remote areas, estimated at 12%, compared to non-remote areas at 7%. And the prevalence of diabetes increases as the level of remoteness and socio-economic disadvantage increases. Nurse practitioners currently practise predominantly in metropolitan areas, and that's the second document that I've tabled for your reference, the Nurse Practitioner Statistics.
Thank you.
66% of nurse practitioners are reported to be working in metropolitan areas. Nurse practitioners are part of the fabric in metro hospitals, yet they are denied access in rural areas by a lack of resources and funding. Nurse practitioners help to allow their clinical colleagues, whether that be other nurses, general practitioners, specialists, et cetera, to function more efficiently. We are a team. One of my medical colleagues, who also was asked to speak today but couldn't be here, provided me with what I thought was a really fantastic analogy for this situation. In metro and rural hospitals, we are all being asked to play the same sport, for example cricket, yet we don't all have access to the same team members. The rural sites are often going without their specialist bowler, that we need to make an efficient team. It is my strong recommendation to this hearing that more nurse practitioners be introduced into rural and regional New South Wales and that there is a geographical equity in the distribution of nurse practitioners. and that there is a geographical equity in the distribution of nurse practitioners across L H Ds when allocating positions. It is time rural and remote communities had greater access to these services as your postcode should not predict your health outcomes. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present my views today.
Thank you for that very concise and clear opening statement. Ms. Warboys?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I too would like to thank you for this opportunity to speak. As I've said, I've lived in the rural lifestyle for the majority of my life. I'm actually born and bred rural. And I have become a clinician and a manager and had to deal with all the roles and responsibilities that are undertaken at a small site with one manager on site at any time. Recruitment issues, seeking and addressing accreditation and credentialing of medical officers and nurses takes up a majority of my time as we do not have the staff to fill all vacancies. I too would encourage nurses to undertake further education, to pursue advancement and help with this system, to improve it. I, like Kate, have undertaken multiple courses and education to improve my knowledge so that I can work in a rural location. The smaller the site, the greater the need to be multi-skilled. We cannot have junior staff expected to work on duty with one other nurse. As a patient, the past six months has not been good to me, but I've had the experience of going away and coming back to find my G P S left and I have no doctor and dealing with that. How other people in the town deal with that who don't have a background in health is worrying and concerning to me. As a carer to an ailing father and dealing with his health needs and ensuring that he has the appropriate health care that he requires is my greatest desire. We've been fortunate so far with how he's been dealt with, but I see others who don't have that luxury. Not being able to have their person, carer, their patient admitted to the local facility and being sent elsewhere to be treated without the family being able to go. It's a difficult time. It's a difficult issue. And I would just like us all to work together to improve it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we'll divide the time between the groupings appropriately, that's roughly about ten minutes each, about, so we'll start with Honorable Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Warboys, in your submission, you say that in your view, the rural health situation is the, is the worst that you've seen.
Yes.
How long have you been in the health and hospital system?
So I've been a registered nurse for twenty-five years and a midwife for twenty years. I actually came, I've only not worked in the rural system when I've been away training, so that's probably a period of three years. But when I became a midwife, the reason I became a midwife was that I could not get a position in a rural facility because they didn't need generalists, they needed midwives. So I elected to undertake the training to be able to come back and be employed in my local town.
So when you say your local town, you're referring to Gunnerdale?
Yes, I am.
So you've been here twenty-five years?
Yes.
What do you see? Earlier, the Honourable Trevor Khan, who represents the National Party.
No, I don't.
Okay, Trevor Khan, who was elected as a National Party member.
I think we know how the questioning should be done, so.
Okay, he made the observation that this has always been for the last thirty years, the situation of rural health. But you, and you say that you've never seen, so what do you see as the?
Not quite what I said, but.
Oh, to the, something to that effect.
Listen, let's ask the question.
What do you see as the deterioration in what areas and what do you see has caused that?
The deterioration has been the availability of not only medical services to the local town, but also the ability to train and retain nursing staff to positions as well. When I came back twenty-five years ago, we had twelve, thirteen doctors in the town and we, as I said, I couldn't get a job as a generalist nurse because they didn't need them, but they needed midwives and I was willing to, you let me come back and get a position, I'll go off and do the training and pay my own way. And that's just me because I want advancement. But over time, we've lost that. We don't have local people who go off and train and come back to their local towns. The system changing, I think, more to a non-work-based type training has taken away positions that, you know, were fielded by, by people whilst training. I currently, my current role is actually the manager of Bogabri M P S.
Ah.
So for us to take on a new grad registered nurse is very hard because it would mean having an extra position to ensure that they were supported and not left with trying to deal with a management of a facility after hours. So they're just some of the issues.
Can I take you to the, your manager of the Bogabri M P S? So what services, do you have an emergency department at that?
Yes, we do.
Do you have doctors on duty at Bogabri?
We are fortunate that we do, but Oka Health, who runs the Medical Santarian Bogabri, when our last G P and his wife, who was also G P, left, they were unable to attract fully qualified general practices, practitioners who had completed training. So we actually have two training general practitioners at present.
Sorry, two trainee-ing or trainee?
Trainee.
Trainee.
So.
What does that mean? Are those junior doctors?
They're junior doctors. And usually what would happen is that there is meant to be a qualified member of the, sorry, I can't remember, but the organisation that trains doctors, the R A G C G P.
R A C G P.
Thank you, Kate. Analogy, so there's no one on site to do that role, so they're being managed remotely.
When you say remotely, you mean these two trainee G Ps, sorry, two trainee doctors are being managed by telephone and video camera?
Correct.
Okay, so these two trainee doctors, what do they do when they're, they're in the facility and there's something urgent that happens? What do they do?
They ring Tamworth.
They ring Tamworth?
Yes.
And do they ring Tamworth very often during a shift?
They're on call for, say, a week, seven days, twenty-four hours a day. And they would probably ring at least once a shift, once, maybe two, three times in a twenty-four hour period. It depends on our presentations to the emergency department. So we average, or we're averaging approximately fifty presentations per month, which was a gradual increase. I know it sounds like a small number, but when you've only got two beds and two nurses on duty.
Yeah.
It's a big workload.
So, so you must experience or view the pressure that the trainee doctors and nurses are under. Are they under a lot of pressure in Bogabri?
They are at times, especially areas where they're, for example, palliative care, which can be stressful and distressing for many people. But, you know, we try to work with them and encourage them to seek assistance from Tamworth to get the advice that's needed because sometimes they are hesitant to acknowledge that they need assistance. Whereas if it's someone sitting in the room across from them, it's very easy to go and knock on a door and ask a question. They will come to senior nursing staff and ask for their opinion. And one of the areas in small sites that I think supporting Kate is nurse practitioners. That could be very beneficial.
Okay, I hear you on that. So you see a role for nurse practitioners to assist in M P Ss?
Definitely.
Now, what kind of presentations would appear at Bogabri? Would these be road accidents and things like that? What kind of things would these young trainee doctors?
They, they could see anything from a small cut to a finger, the cold and flu symptoms, to, yes, a cardiac arrest, a road trauma. We have a big mining industry in our area, so we often have miners brought in with various injuries. We have a really good working relationship with New South Wales Ambulance at Bogabri, the staff there. And they will utilise their skills and knowledge to determine if they feel that it's something that can go to, will need to go to Tamworth and we can avoid a step by going to Bogabri, they will not avoid us, but move on.
Now, I don't know if you're familiar, but this is our sixth hearing in a, in a regional centre. And in other parts of the state involving M P Ss, we've had evidence that tea ladies and cleaning staff had to provide support in M P Ss and in small hospitals where there were no doctors or they're understaffed. At your Bogabri situation, have you in fact have had to have, resort to similar situations? What, can you give an example of what you had to do?
We've had tea ladies or the hotel services staff doing meals with our residents. We have sixteen residents because.
When you, when you say doing meals, you mean helping them eat?
Yep, putting the meal in front of them, helping set up, knowing they're pretty, you know, they get to know the residents, so they know what equipment they need. And it's because nursing staff are tied up in the emergency department with a tree, what we would call a triage, three, two or one. And or there's one nurse trying to manage two dining rooms and so they're our backup. And while we're busy with the more acute episodes.
Now, we've also had evidence in other areas where there have been certain, there have been stints where in the M P Ss and smaller hospitals, there have been situations where there have been no doctors at all. Has Bogabri experienced similar situations like that?
Yes, we have.
Oh, when was the last time you didn't have a doctor?
Immediately, I've been on leave for the last six months. But before that, there was a weekend that we had no doctor. I can't give you dates.
Was that last year?
Last year, early last year, so between January and March, because the both doctors were going to training and the Oka were unable to provide us with a locum. So we went on business continuity plan.
What's business continuity?
Basically, sorry.
Sorry, I don't know what business.
A business continuity plan is a plan of action of the steps that nursing staff will take while we've got no doctors on site.
It's put a lot of pressure on the nurses, not?
It does. And as a manager, I sit at home worrying about how my nurses are dealing with the issues because I have stayed back and worked with them in emergencies. And if I'm here, I'm forty minutes away to get to them, to support them. And I only have two nurses that live in Bogabri that I could call on and say, can you get up to the hospital to help those?
Just to give context, so how far is Bogabri from Tamworth?
So from Tamworth, it's a hundred and ten kilometres approximately.
Oh, so a hundred and ten Ks if you had to, if you're in trouble and you had to get to Tamworth?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Warboy, just one question from me before I pass on. With respect to those junior doctors dealing with the palliation of patients at the end of life, you said that they sometimes have cause to have to ring or do ring across to Tamworth.
Correct.
For, for some discussion over the phone. Are they speaking across at Tamworth to, to a G P or a palliative physician or you don't know?
Palliative physician.
So there is a palliative physician there in Tamworth?
Yep.
Now, thank you for that. So, Anna Hurst?
Thank you. Ms. Warboys, you said you've been on leave for the last six months. Just a personal question, do you want to go back to work with the current conditions as they are?
It's not a solid yes.
It's not, yeah, no, it's not a solid yes. When I actually went on sick leave and it had nothing to do with the, the situation at work, I was stressed out and as I had stated, felt burnt out. And, yeah, I, I just don't know if I want to put myself back in that situation. However, I'm a nurse by heart and, you know, in a way I love the job. But it's just got to the point where, you know, you're trying, as a manager at a small site, I'm trying to work clinical shifts, do my own work and being pressured from staff below as well as senior managers. And people have said I look more relaxed while I'm on leave and I thought I would have.
Probably true.
I haven't exactly been off holiday, so I hate to see what I looked like before.
And we've heard quite a bit from nurses during this inquiry about feeling as though they can't even take leave or sick leave because of the pressures in the role, especially when there's no doctor available. Is that what you're sort of worried about going back into?
Yes, yes, the fact that we don't have a casual pool. If we have a nurse that's casual, she's covering three or four hospitals in the area. And, you know, and it's, it got to the point where I felt that every time someone looked at me, they were going to ask me to stay back, work an extra shift or cover something coming up. And because they themselves are struggling when, you know, I go to them and say, is there any chance you could stay back tonight? So we're all in a similar situation.
All near burnout.
Yep.
Ms. Ryan, are you in the Gunnerdale area? Is that?
I live and work in Tamworth.
Tamworth. And, and what's currently happening with the community members in your area if they have diabetes?
So Tamworth is lucky, I think, in that there's a diabetes centre. So we have three full-time positions at the Tamworth Diabetes Centre. Hope I've got that right. I work there. So we service type one diabetics, type two diabetics, women with diabetes in pregnancy or gestational diabetes. It's a service that's for children and adults, so it's a wide scope for Tamworth. But we are also the referral site for smaller towns like Bogabri. If there's a child with diabetes in Bogabri, which we have, they come to Tamworth. Gunnerdale, they come to Tamworth for specialist appointments.
So you'd like to see that really expanded?
Yeah, I mean, I think in the business case that I've put together previously to propose a nurse practitioner for our role, it would be a role that would help in a couple of areas. One would definitely be in upskilling G P practices with their diabetes management. We've heard multiple stories today and you've heard multiple stories before about the lack of G Ps or the difficulty with patients getting into G Ps. And a lot of G Ps would agree that a big part of their workload is chronic disease management, of which diabetes is one of them.
So, and you also said in your submission that there's a deficit in G P knowledge and confidence in managing patients with diabetes. You know, obviously this is very concerning. Why is that the case and what needs to happen?
Yeah, I'll clarify that it's not every G P that has a lack of knowledge in diabetes. There's lots of G Ps that are really amazing at managing their patients with diabetes and they've got a vested interest in that. But there's also a lot of G Ps that like to be able to refer their diabetic patients to someone else for specialisation. So I think that that's.
And that's where that role, the nurse practitioner could provide assistance?
I mean, I've previously done some private practice in G P practices in Tamworth and that's been useful for the G Ps there. They can refer their patients to me. It helps free up their time so that the diabetic patients aren't having to make appointments with the G P. But for a nurse practitioner in particular, the added benefit, as opposed to a registered nurse who's a credentialed diabetes educator, the nurse practitioner can prescribe medications. They can order pathology tests for that patient. And there's a hundred examples of that where patients will come to see me in the hospital at Tamworth and all they need is a pathology form. I saw a person yesterday. But he has to make an appointment to get that pathology form from his G P and his G P is not available because they're in Gunnerdale. So then there's this issue of how do I even get the pathology form to this patient for the simple test that they need that I know as a nurse practitioner I could just write?
Yeah, yeah. And, and just for the benefit of the committee, a nurse practitioner is doing this role in diabetes in metropolitan areas?
Yeah.
And so why hasn't that expanded to rural areas?
I, I don't know, is the answer. I would love to see, there is a nurse practitioner position currently advertised in Lismore, which I was so excited to see and I would love to see that in lots of other smaller sites.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. We'll stick with you, Ms. Ryan, in terms of your submission. You talk about the current business models of the L H Ds where you say that with the current business models, they'll mostly determine where their budget is placed and that more must be done to ensure transparency of funding, application and allocation of nurse practitioners across the acute and community sectors to ensure gaps in rural areas are addressed. So what now, what input do you have within, as a nurse practitioner, with the L H D now to say, look, we, we need more nurse practitioners? Is there any avenue?
What do you mean by what input do I have?
You've, you've said here that more must be done in terms of transparency of funding. At the moment, is there any avenue? And I think in your opening statement, you suggested that your calls have been largely ignored.
Yeah, I've, I've found it frustrating, yes.
So what, what's the avenue? What have you tried? So what's the avenue? What have you tried to do?
So a couple of things. So I've tried to see if our current clinical nurse consultant position could be converted to a transitional nurse practitioner position. So a clinical nurse consultant is different to a nurse practitioner. Both have advanced skills in diabetes management, but the added benefit of a nurse practitioner is the higher level of autonomy, that you can practise more independently, prescribe, order diagnostic tests, et cetera, refer patients as well, which is a big bonus for the nurse practitioner role. So that was declined.
So it's declined. So who do you put that application to or that request to?
To Tamworth Hospital Management.
Okay, so where it says here as well, so you're wanting transparency of funding?
Yeah.
So at the moment, what's not transparent about the funding in your view?
In terms of how nurse practitioner positions are allocated?
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's, I don't think that that's transparent. Every time there's a job advertised for a nurse practitioner, and I hate using the word every time and all the time, but it feels like every time, there's, it's a position that's in a metropolitan area. And I mean Newcastle, Sydney, Brisbane, Melbourne, Canberra.
Yeah, that was raised, I think, in a submission in the previous session, actually, the perception
Yeah.
that more of the funding within this LHD is going towards Newcastle.
It does feel like that. I did ask...
In terms of need?
Yeah, I did ask management at Newcastle about how many nurse practitioners we have in our LHD. And we're really lucky, we have fifty-one apparently, which is more than any other LHD in New South Wales. I did also ask how many of those nurse practitioners are working rurally compared to Greater Newcastle. The answer I got was that it's fifty-fifty, which I would, I find hard to believe, but apparently it is fifty-fifty. But I only know of seven that work outside of Greater Newcastle. I would have to, I would have to check the names and locations of where each of the nurse practitioners work.
Okay, thank you.
I think I find that frustrating, that I'm not sure how positions are. And for example, there's eight nurse practitioners that work at the neonatal ICU at John Hunter, and I'm not for a second saying that any of them are not worthy of that role.
Of course.
It's a really important job. But it's also a very specialised scope. So that's not a job that you can take that nurse practitioner and work in Bogabri or Gunnerdale, because there's no neonatal ICU in those areas.
Ms. Warboys, and this will be my last question, Chair. In your submission, you state, what's the use of upgrading a facility if there's no clinical staff to work within the facility? So which facility are you referring to again?
I'm referring to Gunnerdale District Hospital, who's been fortunate to get funding for upgrade. And it is if they, it, I suppose at the time I wrote that I was very frustrated as being a patient and that, that when the limitations to people being able to be admitted to the facility, majority of people seeing in the emergency department, and they're wanting, and it's great that they want to enhance skills and positions available by the, you know, the latest diabetes on renal and chemotherapy treatments. But you need to have the staff there who can perform the task. And at the moment, Gunnerdale, like Bogabri, like Narabri, is utilising agency nurses to fill vacancies. So it's great to have a new facility, but you need the staff employed and you need to be able to attract them.
You're definitely not the first witness to have told us that.
Thank you. Oh, Wes Fane.
Thank you very much. Thank you for appearing today. Ms. Ryan, I just wanted to talk about the role of nurse practitioners, if I could. Could you give us some insight as to what a nurse practitioner is able to do that, say, a nurse can't, and how that can help alleviate some of the workload from doctors?
So a nurse practitioner is someone with advanced skills in a specific area. In Australia, you have to have been working for a minimum of five years. I think they're now changing it to a minimum of three years in a particular area to then get into the master's program. So you have a master's level qualification at university. And the difference in what a nurse practitioner can do compared to what a registered nurse can do is in advanced assessment and diagnosis of patients within their, and I always say, within their scope of practice. So for me, it's diabetes education and management. So I would be able to assess and diagnose and prescribe medications and refer patients that have diabetes for their sort of whole occasion of care that they have, if you like. That helps alleviate pressure from GPs who either, you know, aren't current or up to date with where the diabetes medications are. Ten years ago, diabetes was a lot easier. There was a couple of oral tablets and there was insulin. And now we have a whole host of oral tablets and other injectables that are not insulin and a whole heap of new insulins, and it can be confusing. So to have a specialist available to help GPs in that area, sort of take some pressure off them. And we know that the numbers for diabetes are huge, and they're getting bigger.
So for a nurse practitioner in, say, somewhere like Tamworth, which is where you reside at the moment, you've got a diabetes clinic there already. I imagine that it would be beneficial for Tamworth. But in a place such as Gunnerdale, like we are now, where they actually don't have those services, would a nurse practitioner in a location such as Gunnerdale be of even greater assistance to the community than somewhere like Tamworth, where they've already got some of the services?
Yep, absolutely. And that's part of the business case that I have put together, is that the nurse practitioner for diabetes would go to smaller sites once a month, once a fortnight, to do diabetes clinics to help with that.
Okay. And so while not replacing a doctor, nurse practitioners in those roles in, you know, medium to small communities around New South Wales could actually provide a lot of those services which would normally fall onto a GP or...
Yeah. It's a gap-filling role, and that's what it was designed to be. But unfortunately, at the moment, the majority of nurse practitioners do work in cities, as the second document that I've handed in shows, it's sixty-eight percent or something.
Yeah. And in your opinion, do you think if we had nurses who were trained up in order to become nurse practitioners with the required experience, would they be looking to move to sort of areas like rural, regional, New South Wales to actually practise and gain further experience?
I would really hope that that would happen, because the other issue, and it's been brought up by earlier speakers today, is that there's not a lot of professional development for nurses in the country. You know, I've done this master's degree at my own expense and with the help of some scholarships, but I've done this on my own without knowing that I have a certain job at the end of it with New South Wales Health. And most people would only apply for the course, the master's course, knowing that they have a transitional nurse practitioner position, so they have a job to go into. So, yeah, I think that having a pathway for nurses in the country to upskill is really important. I know lots of fantastic nurses that work in the country, but they choose not to work for New South Wales Health for a whole heap of reasons. And a lot of that is burnout, and they get bored with where they're working. And they don't want to get paid the same as the person sitting next to them that's fifteen years junior.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. Did you have some questions, Ms.?
Thank you very much.
I've got more.
I just wanted to actually touch on agency nursing. And when I worked as a nurse, I had a number of friends that chose to do agency work because the flexibility of being able to work in different hospitals, but also the extra loading they got. Has there any, anything been looked at from a regional country perspective in, first of all, whether or not agency, or what could be done to move agency nurses to take up the full-time positions locally?
I wouldn't be able to answer that. I'd have to get back to you.
Yeah, no, no. Or if anyone that you spoke to is an agency nurse?
I don't know of many agency nurses in situations in country towns.
While Bogabri, agency nurses with us haven't, have enjoyed stays, but also found it difficult. I do know of other facilities where they have had agency nurses come and ended up staying on and taking on positions because they've enjoyed the experience, they've enjoyed the town, they've enjoyed everything. So, yes, we do, but they're few and far between. And one of the other difficulties we've had is where we attract agency nurses, and even though, you know, I clearly state you will be expected to work across aged care, medical and emergency nursing, when they get to us and they see what they're expected to do and the workload and the staffing levels, we've had them leave.
Do you have any suggestions of what more could be done to recruit nurses into countries area? Obviously, we've heard from GPs about the challenges they face and some of their suggestions. But from your perspective, what are some things that, from a state or a federal perspective, that could be done?
I'd like to see, nurses don't get in towns the equivalent of incentives that people try to offer doctors to come to towns. The relocation, you know, housing, we're lucky if we've got a...
Study leave.
Study leave. We're lucky if we've got an empty room over at the nurses' quarters that we could put someone in. But they're not offered to nurses. We're not, you know, I think there needs to be a level of equivalency there for nurses, to attract them to rural areas. Like Kate said, study leave. Encouragement to come and do courses or come work in Bogabri and say, well, you know, I really enjoy it here. I want to do that advanced emergency nurse course to get my skills up to date. And we will try and support them. But it's...
I think, sorry to cut you off, I think the other thing is nurses want to feel safe when they're at work. And to feel like when they're doing upskilling like at Bogabri, that they've got incredibly intelligent and advanced workforce working with them so they can ask questions. I remember working at Wee War Hospital as only one of two registered nurses, and I was sort of first year out of my graduate year, so I was really junior, and a lot of scary things come in at night time, and there's only one other nurse there, there's no doctors. So, you know, that's a deterrent, I think, from people wanting to work in smaller places. So that's why you do need things like nurse practitioners, that I talk about all the time, to try and upskill the workforce.
Oh, Wes Fane.
Thank you. Ms. Warboys, just wanted to address some of the points that we were talking about earlier around Bogabri. With the doctors that you've got there at the moment, the trainee GPs, I'm guessing that's what you were saying?
Yeah.
They're not like just out of medical school, are they? They've actually been through the hospital process. They're even in the training programme now for GPs, and they're, you know, they're in, well within their, that training programme, aren't they?
They are. That's, that's part of taking on the position, is that they must complete the training course. Both our trainee GPs at present are overseas-trained doctors. So they've come with knowledge to, in other areas and hospital, and done hospital experience in the metropolitan side of the hills.
Yeah.
But, you know, coming to Bogabri was their first experience of being in a rural area and seeing...
I just wanted to make sure that they weren't new, because some people could have had the, I guess, the impression that they were just, you know, a trainee doctors as opposed to, you know, in the training programme for GPs. So they've actually got some experience. And then, obviously, being overseas-trained, they've got some overseas experience as well.
Yes.
Yeah. And they're also supported through the telehealth programme when they do require?
Yes, they are. And personally, I encourage them to use telehealth and use telehealth throughout the facility and even as being the patient myself. I think telehealth's a wonderful aspect that needs to be further developed and greater utilised by doctors, nurses, nurse practitioners, so that we've got that contact.
So you've found that for Bogabri, for example, the support and the mentoring that it can provide, particularly the trainee GPs that you've got, is actually a positive?
It is a positive, but it doesn't take away from them having the person there to observe them, doing a consultation
Yeah.
and assist them in emergency if there is something that they're not sure of.
Yeah.
It would be nice that, that did, you know, that's something that's been lacking, is the actual face-to-face contact. And, you know, and I have had discussions before I went on leave with OCA about some issues we were having at the time, about them coming out and spending time, more than a day with them, actually spending a week so that they're supported, they get some continuity of support and face-to-face...
Mentoring.
Mentoring and, yeah.
And the last thing I wanted to address was, oh, you had one, that's now the fourth. Oh, sorry, it was, it was in my past.
Walt, second, have one final one, okay? So that was round off.
Ms. Warboys, so you talked about nurses leaving, leaving because of the pressure. So what are the pressure, what would be, what would be a circumstance that you can recall where a nurse just decided to leave?
Having the workload. So having two nurses and having your sixteen residents. We will always, whenever a facility that's going to be empty, because we all always have residents. So sixteen residents, an acute ward that's full, and an ED for us that, you know, is bopping. It may only be two patients in that ED, but if you're a registered nurse on with a enrolled nurse that can't do medications, then you're the person that's trying to get everything done. And not having that doctor there, coming from a facility that may have had a doctor on-site twenty-four hours a day, we have to call them in.
So you would have a situation where you'd have two, you'd have two nurses with sixteen residents and looking after an emergency department and an acute ward?
Yes.
That's extraordinary.
Yep. As I left, the staff had gone to the union to ask for additional staffing, and they did get it. But that's still only, I shouldn't say only, any nurses valuable, but it still may be a mixture of a registered nurse with two enrolled nurses for certain hours. It's not every shift. So on night duty, it's still two nurses.
Thank you. That's it? No, no. So listen, it's always a challenge. Everyone sort of just wants to stretch. So listen, we're just, but listen, thank you both very much for coming along to give us the opportunity to sort of question you and have you to elucidate on your evidence to both what were very good submissions. And on behalf of the committee, thank you very much for the outstanding work you've done and continue to do in the committee as registered nurses and people who obviously have a real passion and dedication to your vocation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to our last couple of witnesses. Ms. Priest and Mr. Jeffrey, please. Thank you very much. Thank you. Well, thank you both very much for joining us as our last panelists morning. Appreciate that very much. Now, I'll get through formally. I need you to affirm or swear an oath for your evidence in the first instance. So we'll start with you, Ms. Priest. Your name, your position, title. But I understand both you are appearing in your own capacity as a private citizen of the region. And since we're either an oath or an affirmation, whichever you prefer, the words of both should be before you. So, Ms. Priest.
I'm a priest.
Can I invite you to pull that taller microphone forward and speak into it? So that's, that's fine. Make it a bit easier for you. Thank you.
I'll just get comfy.
And actually, you can push it down as well, actually, which will make it a bit easier.
Yep.
Thank you.
So, I'm a priest.
Thank you.
The oath, no?
That's okay. That's okay.
Sorry.
And you're appearing in your capacity as a private citizen, living, do you live in Gunnerdale or Tamworth?
In Gunnerdale.
Thank you very much. And would you like to swear either an oath or an affirmation with your evidence?
The oath.
Now, the words of the oath should be before you.
Yep.
So put the hand on the bible if you wish. So please proceed.
I swear that the evidence about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So help me, God.
Thank you very much. And I know it's easy for me to say, just relax, it's not easy if you haven't given everything. But open that bottle of water, it's a fresh bottle. So just take a sip. And so, Mr. Jeffrey, can I invite you to proceed?
Good morning, everybody. I'd like to take the affirmation, if I may.
Most certainly. And you're appearing as a citizen?
I'm a, as a private citizen.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, Mr. Jeffrey. Now, with respect to both of you, as you're obviously aware, you've made submissions and inquiry. Ms. Priest, your submission stands as submission six hundred and nineteen, and has been processed and forms evidence and has been uploaded to the Inquiry's webpage. And, Mr. Jeffrey, you well, of course, have made the submission, and yours stands as number four hundred and twelve to the Inquiry, and it's been processed and stands as evidence and been uploaded to the Inquiry's webpage. Now, can I invite you both now, first of all, take it as read, the committee members have read, your... Now, can I invite you both now, first of all, take it as read, the committee members have read your submission. So you don't need to in your opening statement, go through that in detail. If perhaps just a couple, three minutes, four minutes to set up the sort of whole discussion you like and then we'll share the questions between the members joining us today. So we'll start with you, Ms. Priest, if that's okay?
Okay.
Just take it easy. That's fine. Pause it any time to have a sip. There's no problem. Just take your time.
How is it that someone who has had no medical training has to tell a doctor and three nursing staff that my son needed to be put on fluids? My son is a type one diabetic, which is an autoimmune disease. Gastrobugs are an absolute nightmare for type ones. This was our first hospital trip after being diagnosed, eight months prior. On Friday, the 18th of December 2020, my son came down with gastro. I was unable to keep his blood glucose level to stay above 2.8. Normal is between 3.5 and nine. My son had thrown up five times before I took him to the Gundar Hospital at 4pm. He threw up another eight times while we were there and no fluids were administered. Yes, the locum doctor in the emergency was in contact with the paediatricians at the Tamworth Base Hospital about what should be done with my son. But when an eight-year-old boy-
Just take it easy. Just have a sip. Just take it. Just have a bit of a pause if you like. That's okay. No, 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 don't apologize. Just take it nice and slow.
When an eight-year-old boy is unable to keep food or water down and levels aren't being stabilized, the nurse or the doctor should have known to give fluids. Sorry.
No, no, don't apologize. Just take it easy.
We're at the hospital for five hours. And the only thing that was done was an hour before then, when I demanded that my son be put on fluids. We were finally taken to Tamworth Base by ambulance for two nights. And even when we were discharged, we were not told that my son's insulin levels were too high. And he stayed with low levels for two days. I should have been given a management plan while he was sick. I wasn't given anything. No one told me that his insulin levels were too high and that was what was keeping him sick. I'm sure there are more children and adults that live in Gundar with type one. And for the doctors and nursing staff not to know what to do is not only frightening, but is an absolute joke. We don't go to the hospital unless it's something that we can't fix on our own. We put our lives in the hands of these doctors and nurses and we're not being cared for appropriately. I shouldn't have to risk my son's life driving to Tamworth Base 45 minutes away just for him to receive the right treatment. I refuse to go to Gundar Hospital for anything to do with my son.
Thank you, Ms. Priest. So just have a little bit of a break. So thank you for that statement and we'll return to some questions in a moment. So, Mr. Jeffrey, would you like to add your statement?
First of all, thank you very much for inviting me here today and for allowing me to express my concerns. Just a little bit of my background, I've lived in Gundar for 30 years. I came here 30 years ago when I was appointed principal of Gundar High School. I've been 15 years as principal, retired and have had another 15 years in Gundar. So I can't consider myself a local because I have only 30 years here, but I do have a little bit of a grip on the Gundar community and, you know, I really am concerned about the shortages of GPs in the town at the moment. And when you read my submission, I was fairly focused on that as, you know, the single problem. I have given out a couple of documents for you today. The first one is information about Gundar Rural Health Centre.
That's that one, mate?
That's the one, yes. I'd imagine probably by now you will have had information about that. And you will know that it's largely dysfunctional now because, mainly because of the lack of GPs.
And just identify the second document, Mr. Jeffrey. The second one is-
That's the one, yes.
Gunar hearing, yep, that's fine. Thank you. Just so we got both Dr. Ince's monies, yep.
I mean, in my view, GPs provide an essential service. I don't think, you know, we should regard them just as a, you know, a part of the medical profession. They are the essential services. And in my view, they are the, what I call the pipers of the medical profession. Because if a town has adequate or good supply of GPs, the other medical services will follow them. They will obviously get their referrals and the whole situation will improve. So the frustrating point for me is that we have an excellent facility, but we don't have the doctors which we need to bring people to that facility. But rather than dwell on the negative, I'd like to distort to my second document there.
Yes, go ahead.
Because I would like to highlight three key factors that I believe are, must be considered if we're going to sort this problem out. The first key factor is that I think we need one single organisation which is responsible for the provision of GP services. And my correspondence with local MPs, with ministers responsible for health at both federal and state level have shown me that it's very easy for them to sit back and wait for somebody else to do, to fix the problem. I mean, I could call it back passing, but it does go on. And in my letters, I found that, you know, people have said, well, I'll refer you to someone else. And, you know, the whole situation falls through the cracks and nothing ends up being done. So I do believe it should be a government organisation. The market forces that are being, we're hoping will provide us with GPs are not working. And that seems to be, from all my communication, market forces seems to be the way that GPs are supplied. But that may be a question that somebody might like to dwell on. The second key factor is obviously the long-term need for what I believe is more doctors in Australia. I have a letter from the Federal Minister for Regional Health who says, we know there are enough doctors being trained in Australia. Well, I don't know where he gets his formative form from because they certainly, you know, a lot of areas in rural Australia just don't have enough doctors. I think that we have to have a dramatic expansion in the number of students going to medical school and training to be doctors. I have to, have to say that I think students in rural areas need more encouragement. I know from my time at principal that there are many, many bright rural students who find actually going to university quite a daunting prospect and we're not getting the best out of that. And I do also believe that they are more likely to return to rural, rural students are more likely to come back to rural students, to rural areas to practise when they qualify. I'm unashamedly in the court that says that every young Australian should have one free kick at a tertiary education, whether that's a free university, free TAFE, free apprenticeship, free job training. I think it's a right. At the moment, it's a privilege, but it should be a right. The third factor is the short-term issue of providing doctors. I think the pandemic has shown us that the fundamental flaw of hoping that we'd be able to recruit from overseas has obviously been, gone out the window with our boundaries being shut. So whereas our chronic shortage of doctors in Gundar might have been fixed by having some overseas doctors come to town, that's not been possible. And so the situation which I described in my original submission five months ago, really nothing has changed. If anything, it's probably, it's probably worse than it was. Look, thank you for listening to what I've had to say. Look, I'll be delighted to field any questions that you would like to give me on my original submission, comments I've made today and the two documents that I've circulated.
Well, thanks, Mr. Jeffrey, for your very cogent and thoughtful opening statement, which I'm sure is going to stimulate some questions from committee members. Now, Ms. Priest, in terms of proceedings now, what we normally do is we open it up to committee members to ask questions. But I'm just obviously well aware of the difficulty that you've had. I'm sure committee members will be thoughtful of that in terms of asking the questions. But I will ask you, do do you want to be available to ask questions or have questions asked of you and you'd be okay with that?
I'll try.
No, no, well, I'm sure you'll be okay. I'm sure. But I just, you know, we respect the circumstances. It's been most difficult. I mean, is your son okay now? Your son's okay now? Okay, that's fine. Well, pass over the members. It's about seven minutes for each block, so eight minutes.
Pretty nice, Walt.
Well, we're all nice around this table, thanks. So please proceed.
Thank you both for your time and taking time to put in submissions. And, Mr. Jeffrey, I do understand when you say that you've lived, you've lived in Gundar for 30 years and you're still about whether you're a local. I've lived here for 33 years and people say, did you just step off the boat? So I, so I know where you're coming from. And, Ms. Priest, thank you for your-
Where are you, American?
Oh, my American, yeah. I was born in Canada. And, Ms. Priest, thank you, thank you. And if you don't mind, what is your son's name?
Dylan.
Dylan. And is Dylan okay now?
Yeah, as well as a type one can be.
Top one can be. So, and Dylan is at school and doing the normal activity that a normal boy is doing?
He had his ninth birthday on last Thursday. He was diagnosed at seven, so it's all still very new to us.
Okay. So when you reported to Gundar Hospital, were you aware at the time that he was diabetic?
Yes. Oh, when he was first diagnosed?
When the essence of your submission, when that occurred?
No. It was through COVID and my mum had noticed that he had lost weight. So we went to the pharmacy and they pricked his finger and said, you need to go to the hospital. So it was sort of like a big rush. And, yeah, that was, he had lost three kilos in four weeks and just constantly going to the toilet and drinking a lot of fluids. But, um-
Oh, so he'd be a little boy to lose three kilos. It's a lot.
Yes.
Okay. So when you presented to Gundar Hospital, was it, what was, I guess, was it a lack of staff? Were the nurses and doctors?
So when he was first diagnosed, everything was great. They knew we were coming because the pharmacy had rung and said this was the situation. So they knew. When I took him back for gastro, the nurses saw to us straight away. The doctor came to see us as well. I can't fault the staff on the day. It was just the treatment that, I mean, I didn't know where I stood. I mean, this was our first time at hospital since he had been diagnosed. I didn't really know what he needed. But I knew that giving him more fluids and more things to eat wasn't the answer. It wasn't, he wasn't keeping anything down. It wasn't, they gave him an anti-nausea tablet under his tongue and he brought all of that back up and continued to vomit. So I just don't understand why we were there for five hours and nothing was done. I, I had to demand. I finally said he needs to be on fluids because he wasn't keeping anything down. Like, I'm not medically trained to know that, but to me, like, that's what he needed.
Was the emergency department at the time busy?
No. When we got there, it wasn't. It did become busier. But we were seen to straight away, sort of thing, by both the nurses and the doctor. So it's nothing at all to do with staffing on that day.
So you would see it to be maybe there was a communication problem. They weren't, they were unable to hear what you were trying to explain about your son Dylan?
They knew it all, but I think the doctor was in talks with the paediatrician at the Tamworth Base and they were sort of saying, just wait it out, sort of see how everything goes. But, I mean, I don't know how many times somebody has to throw up before something is done.
So the doctor that was on duty at Gundar was on telehealth with Tamworth?
Just phone calls.
Well, just phone calls. Right. So was he, was it a junior doctor?
He was just a locum. I don't know his name. I haven't been back to the hospital to, if I walked past him in the main street, I wouldn't know who he was. He was just the doctor on the day.
Now, so have you complained to health, health department or the HCCC or any bodies about that?
This was my first thing.
This was your first, okay.
And it took a lot to do it. But, I mean, there's more than just my son. I mean, I know eight other kids in Gundar that are type one. I mean, it's not just my son.
And is it, so is it a lack of paediatric services?
It's a lack of staff not knowing what to do for a type one. I asked the nurse what happens next and she said, I have no idea. We've never dealt with type ones. And because they don't, they send us straight to Tamworth. Because as a paediatrician in Tamworth, they're always there.
Ah, I see, I see.
I would have happily driven my son the 45 minutes to Tamworth, knowing that he would get treatment straight away. But with his levels that low, I couldn't drive and look after him.
So what do you, what would you do now if you had, heaven forbid, a crisis situation with Dylan?
I-
Would you go to straight to Tamworth or would you go to Gundar?
It would depend how dire it was. If I thought I was going to lose his life while I had to drive to get him there, well, that's not what I would do. But I would hope that we didn't stay in Gundar very long and we were transferred to Tamworth. Because Gundar, it's like going into a pet store, thinking that you're going to buy dog food and they don't sell it. Gundar isn't equipped. They don't know what to do for type ones. There's no knowledge. There needs to be someone here. I mean, if Dylan was the only one in this town, then fair enough. I could understand we need to go somewhere else to look for the help. He's not the only one. There needs to be someone here that can help us.
Thank you, Ms. Priest. Mr. Jeffrey, in your submission, thank you for your time, Ms. Priest. In your, in your submission, you make the statement that Gundar has been allocated $50 million in the budget for a hospital upgrade, but then you go on to say that this is a, quote, "a total waste of taxpayers' money." You have a situation where you're upgrading a hospital, but you don't have the staff in that hospital.
Specifically doctors, I would say, yes.
So what do you base that on?
Well, it can't function as a hospital should do without doctors, you know. I suppose I could use the parallel, it's like a pub without beer, you know, that it is, the doctors are absolutely essential to the operation of a hospital. And much as I, I would be the first person to say, it's wonderful that we're getting $50 million or I think $50 million's been promised for the hospital, that we must make sure that we've got the doctors and maybe use some of that $50 million to find a way of getting doctors to Gundar and to that hospital.
Mr. Jeffrey, it's not going to please you, but that is the reoccurring evidence that we are getting. This is our sixth inquiry. We have situations where there are hospitals around the state. They don't have doctors on the weekend, don't have doctors for long periods of time. So that statement that you based it on about the lack of doctors at Gundar, is that as a patient? Or is that from the community? Or is that from talking to medical professionals?
I would say myself as a patient, yes. I have been a patient at the hospital there. Yes, the community, I think, has an expectation, as Emma would, that if you go to the hospital, you go to the emergency department, you should be seeing a doctor.
I don't think that's an unreasonable expectation.
No. And I mean, as I did explain in my submission, that the doctors in GP practices that we do have in town also have a responsibility to staff the emergency if they get, you know, a case occur. They can't do that. You know, they then leave a waiting room full of patients that are waiting for them while they go to the emergency and then have to come back again. It's just, it's just hopeless, I believe.
Okay, I'll just finish up on this. I also want to point out in your submission, then you make this statement, which is quite obvious. This is Gundar Hospital should be staffed by full-time doctors.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah. And if the emergency department hasn't got enough for the day, well, then they could take the, or enough patients for the day, then they could take the overflow from the GPs, you know. So that everybody should be able to phone up in the morning and get someone to help them if they're feeling ill.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Jeffrey, you say that you've lived in Gundar for 29 years and this is something that's come up in the inquiry today about the fact that doctor shortages are not a new issue. In your submission, you say that you've seen doctor shortages before, but nothing as chronic as the present situation. What do you think's changed and how is it worse now than it has been in the past?
Well, there's always, it's always been a bit of keep your fingers crossed when you phone up in the morning if you're feeling unwell, that you won't be told, like, we're fully booked out today, try a lot tomorrow. if you're feeling unwell, that you won't be told that we've fully booked out today, trial at tomorrow. That, to my mind, has always been a little bit of a worry in Gunnerdale, but now it's, it happens. I have to go now to Tamworth for basic GP services.
You said you travel a hundred and sixty kilometre round trip for prescription consultations?
Well, yes, actually during the pandemic, I had a phone consultation. But I estimate this year that I will have travelled a thousand kilometres to and from my GP just for basics services. I had the repeat prescriptions, I had a flu vaccination, I had my first COVID vaccination last week. I've got to go tomorrow because I'm seventy-five and I have to have a doctor's statement to say that I'm fit to drive and then.
What if you're not fit to drive?
I beg your pardon?
What would happen if you weren't fit to drive? How would you get to the doctor?
Well, you get the train from Gunnerdale to Wares Creek at ten o'clock, ten fifteen in the morning. You wait in Wares Creek for about three or four hours and then there's a train from Wares Creek to Tamworth and then you need to stop. I mean, if you've got nobody to drive you, yeah, that's, the public transport is.
And is that happening to people that you know in Gunnerdale? Are people having to take that train journey for a prescription or a flu shot?
I'm not sure that that is the extreme case. I think, you know, you just hope somebody will be able to drive you over. But, you know, if you're really feeling sick and, you know, it's not always easy to organise something like that. But there's no, my point really is that there's no bus, no regular bus service.
There's no direct route to kind of catch public transport?
Not really. There is one bus that goes through from Tamworth Station to Dubbo daily, once a day. But the timeframe that that bus takes you there would mean you'd probably have to stay overnight in Tamworth anyway and then you have the accommodation costs as well as the travel issues.
You also talk about, you know, the workload of GPs being unrealistic. I mean, there's already less GPs now than there's been for a while. Are you worried that if the workload is unrealistic, that we're going to see more burnout with the doctors that are now currently in place?
Well, I regret, I probably think that is the case. I mean, I hope it isn't. But it's not fair on putting unrealistic expectations on people in a job. You will burn them out, there's no doubt about that. And I feel for the doctors that we have remaining in town because they're, you know, it's an impossible workload that they have. And, I mean, there are a lot of Gunnerdale residents that are going over to Tamworth. The practice that I go to, I know there's fifty or sixty Gunnerdale patients now. So it's, you know, the people are looking for alternatives. But, yeah, I really do worry that unless we can come up with a way to increase the number of doctors in town, that they will burn out.
Ms Priest, you said that your son's diagnosis was quite new. After the experience that you've had, do you feel safe in your community where you are? And have you had conversations about major changes, potentially even moving out of the area because of the current situation?
Not really. I mean, I'm in a position where I can still take my son to Tamworth for all of his educators' appointments. I mean, Ms Kate Ryan that was talking earlier, she's one of my son's diabetes educators. So we see her quite often. I'm happy to travel. I mean, we like Gunnerdale. We shouldn't have to move just to find somebody that can look after his diagnosis. I mean, it's, I don't feel that I should have to move to the city just to find the people that can help him. I mean, we're happy in our town. We just need the support.
Yeah, fair point, fair point. Thank you.
I've only got one question because a lot of my questions have been asked, Chair. But I just was wondering, Mr Jeffrey, do you, you said, I think, that one of your, one of your interactions with doctors was via telehealth. Is that correct? How are you finding that? And what's the kind of general feedback about the use of telehealth generally here?
Well, I'd much prefer a face-to-face consultation. I think that's essential. I mean, they can be very clever on the telephone, but they can't take your blood pressure, they can't look and see you and see how you feel, which I think doctors often do that. But for the particular problem that I had at the time, which was mainly just getting repeat prescriptions, my doctor knows, you know, knows my health background. But I do have one medication, which really should mean that I have a blood pressure test every time I see him and that wasn't possible. So it's second best, I'd have to say, but, you know, better than nothing at all. Because I don't think I'd be here today if I hadn't got my repeat prescriptions and you have to find a way to do it if you can't travel or if we have a pandemic, which means that the doctor's surgery doesn't operate.
Yeah, thank you. As I said, my questions have already been asked.
Committee members, honourable Trevor Khan.
I think it's only during COVID that the federal government has allowed a Medicare rebate for over-the-phone consultations. So I take it that you would be in favour of a continuation of that Medicare rebate for over-the-phone consultations, at least with regards to scripts?
Yes, I think while we still have our problems with it, yes, definitely.
Look, you got me onside. I think it's second best, but it's better than.
Yes, yes, exactly. And I mean, it's interesting you mention that because, I mean, the chances of being bulk billed in rural areas are pretty slim, you know. I mean, my doctor was very good. I said, how am I going to pay for this? And he said, oh, well, we'll do it through Medicare. But, yeah, bulk billing is probably a city-based phenomenon these days. We don't see a great deal of it out here in the bush.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And that's, you'd be aware, that's a problem that exists in Tamworth as well as Gunnerdale, if you could get the appointment in Gunnerdale.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Look, I don't want to go through all of the material that you've raised because as Ms Ferman says, a lot of it's been covered before. But it would seem to me that the points you raise with regards to general practitioners, you've been raising with Mark Colton over a period of time, that's right.
Yes.
And do I take it that a lot of that is with regards to the Medicare rebates that are, for instance, available or not available in country areas?
No, my concern has been focused on the shortages of GPs and in fact.
Not what will necessarily attract them to a particular area?
I think they have, yeah, the incentives that are proposed by Mr Colton aren't working, I don't think. That's the problem. And we've got the evidence in our shortage of GPs. Yeah, he gave me a lovely long letter with two pages of incentives, but I don't think they're generous enough. I don't think they're comprehensive enough. We need a lot more scholarships for young people to get into the medical profession. And I think the present cohort of doctors that are leaving medical school this year or qualifying as GPs this year, they need to be given some really generous incentives to come to rural areas.
I think one of the things that's been pointed out is that even if you take a, my kids have left home and gone off and disappeared to the city, never to come back. But I think even if you take a kid out of Gunnerdale High, send them down to Sydney University of New South Wales, the prospect is, isn't it, that they'll find a partner in Sydney or wherever. And the difficulty is getting them back because they've sort of paired up, mated up in an environment. It's really training them in the bush, isn't it, that provides the greatest chance of keeping them?
Oh, it would be wonderful to have a facility in a rural area. I mean, most of the universities obviously are in cities or regional centres. But if there was a centre that was in a more remote area, I think that would be wonderful and it would bring attention to the importance of health in rural areas, which is.
Do you think the provision of scholarships in places like Armidale, I'm not quite sure where CSU does, but in the other regional universities might be the way of emphasising of keeping those graduates in the country areas rather than allowing them to escape into the city?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I should make the point that, I did mention in passing that university education can be quite daunting for a student in a rural area. But they inevitably have to leave home. If their parents don't have relatives in the university venue, it means they've got to find their accommodation. The living away from home allowance, as it used to be known, I don't know what it's known now by now, is not adequate. So they end up having to get a part-time job, probably spending as much time at the part-time job as they are in their university studies. And it goes back to what I'm saying is every young Australian should have a free kick at a tertiary education and probably funded so that they don't have to, you know, eat sort of vegemite toast all the while. You know, they're entitled to have a decent way of life at the same time as putting full attention to their studies.
Well, that's how I went first through university, but I think it's probably beyond the remit of this committee. Can I just ask Ms Priest one question and then I'll hand it to my colleagues? Ms Priest, it'll come as no surprise that there are some people who are watching this inquiry. Would you be prepared to speak to somebody from Hunter New England Health to talk through your issues with regards to your son and the treatment that he received? Well, I think we might see what we can do and somebody might get in contact with you if that's all right.
Yeah.
Or just one.
Ms Priest, in your opening statement, when you talked about the experience you had with your son, when you left Gunnerdale to go to Tamworth, did you drive your son at that point or was you, you were transferred?
He was transferred by ambulance.
Oh, okay. Because when you said that you had drove, I wasn't.
I drove myself, just because it was.
So you had a vehicle and, yeah.
That's right. We had to get home.
I just wanted to make sure that you hadn't actually had to transfer your son yourself.
I do know another mum in town with a type one who had issues at the hospital with staffing and she actually drove her daughter to Lake Keepit, which is just before halfway here to Tamworth and called an ambulance then because she wasn't able to be seen.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. And thank you both for making yourself a father able to come along this morning. It's been very valuable to be able to have the opportunity to ask you questions beyond what was in your submissions. We obviously wish you, Ms Priest and your son, all the very best. We hope that he can get onto a stable footing with respect to his condition and I'm sure that will ever be achieved and that he'll be able to go on and live a very healthy and long life. And thank you very much for coming on. Very heartfelt and very difficult to open up as you've done. So we appreciate that very much. And Mr Jeffrey, seventy-five, very bright and spightly, I have to say. And your evidence was very, very good, very much on point. And we thank you very much with your contribution too. So thank you very much.
Thank you everybody for coming to Gunnerdale. Yeah, yes. I hope you enjoy your time here.
And I'd like to thank those from the public who've joined us. It's been very, very helpful, the session this morning. We'd like to be here for longer if possible, but we got to sort of move and head off to our next location. So thank you all for coming on. Thank the media very much for coming along too and hearing what we've got to say. So that concludes the session this morning and we wish everyone a safe travel home. Thank you.